To call this meeting to order and ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Carley, if you would please lead us in the pledge.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence for the American soldier who lost his life earlier this week. All right, we have a rather long agenda and a rather large set of backup material for today's meeting, which should provide for everybody's listening and viewing pleasure. But to kick things off, we have some special recognition. And I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize one of our very special families in the town of Fairfield, who've been putting on an event called the Genata Family Feed for quite a few years now. This is a story of how one Fairfield family, Al and Jeanette Genata, along with their son Anthony and his wife Brenda, have chosen to make a difference in our town. Through their generosity and creativity, and with the help of their friends, they are helping support the Connecticut Food Bank and assisting those less fortunate. They set an example for all of us in terms of how to do this. While the Genatas couldn't make it today, no doubt working hard to prepare for this year's program that happens on Monday evening, we have a representative from the Connecticut Food Bank here to tell us more. So Rachel, if you'd come up, introduce yourself at the podium and fill us in a bit.
Great. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Rachel Labson. I am with the Connecticut Food Bank, and it is really my pleasure to tell you about the wonderful longstanding relationship the Food Bank has had with the Genata family. This represents the 16th year that we have done the Genata Family Feed, and with this year's proceeds, I believe we will have generated more than $200,000 over those 16 years.
Wow.
So they really make a difference, make an impact to the work that we do at the Connecticut Food Bank. And if you would let me take a minute to tell you about hunger in Connecticut. In our state, there are nearly 500,000 residents who are food insecure, which means that they do not know where their next meal is coming from. And that is 1 in 7 households. Of those people, 1 in 5 children are food insecure. Food insecurity exists across the state, in all of our communities, whether it's rural or urban, and the Connecticut Food Bank works hard to alleviate some of these hunger issues. An interesting fact is that in Connecticut, 46% of the food insecure population does not qualify for federal food assistance programs, meaning they don't know where their meals are coming from, but they still cannot qualify for SNAP, which is formerly food stamps, or other free and reduced meals. So some of the ways that we can help this is what Connecticut Food Bank does to fight hunger. We provide food and other resources to more than 700 community-based programs in 6 of the 8 counties in Connecticut. We distribute more than 20 million pounds of food each year. 20 million pounds of food. That's, in my opinion, a lot of food to move back and forth, to distribute. And we do that through the 700 programs with which we partner, as well as some of our programs, which include Grow Up with Great Nutrition, which is an education program where we bring families to a grow truck, and we show them different types of nutritious food that they may not be aware of, share with them nutritious menus, and then give them food to take off of the truck. So it's a distribution program as well as education. We also have a kids' backpack program, where many, many volunteers put together individual backpacks with individual food for children to take the food home on the weekends where their parents may not be able to give them food across the weekend. And then another program is where we bring food directly to people in need in various neighborhoods, and this is called a mobile pantry, where we actually bring the pantry to the neighborhoods where they don't have the resources to go to a big supermarket. Connecticut Food Bank is also very resourceful. For every dollar donated, we can feed somebody in need for one day. So the resources that we use are quite efficient. In other words, 94 cents of every dollar that we receive goes directly toward our programmings. So our operational efficiencies really means that the money, the majority of which, 94 cents of every dollar, goes directly to the programs feeding people. So we are thrilled that you've asked me to come here today. We are so honored to be partnering with the Genata family. They are so meaningful to what we do, and we couldn't continue to do this without the support of people like the Genata family in the community. As you mentioned, the event this year will be held on Monday, November 24, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., at Michael Gennaro's Steakhouse, located at 238 Post Road in Fairfield. The desserts are generously donated by Forever Sweet Bakery, located on 4 New Canaan Avenue in Norwalk. And this year, we are very, very happy to honor Nancy Carrington, who is the president and CEO of the Food Bank. She comes every year to attend the event during the Thanksgiving time, and we are honoring her retirement from the Food Bank at the end of the calendar year. And the proceeds will also go toward our capital campaign. We are building a new distribution facility in Wallingford. So if you want to attend the event, we are more than welcome to have you. If you want more information about the event, the Genatas could not be here, but you can contact Anthony Genata. His phone number is (203) 623-2570, or Al Genata at (203) 623-2673. And if you cannot attend, they would be more than welcome, more than happy, to receive your checks payable to the Connecticut Food Bank care of Anthony Genata at (989) Pequot Avenue, Southport, Connecticut, 06890. And lastly, the Genatas and the Food Bank would like to thank the generous support of Attorney General George Shepson, U.S. Senator Richard Blumenthal, and Governor Dan Malloy. And we want to thank your support as well. Thank you so much for being very great partners with the Food Bank.
All right, thank you. I've had a chance to attend the Food Bank event in the past. It's just a great expression, and I think at times like this, we're looking for examples of how people share, how they give back to the community. I think this is a great example of how one family took on the challenge of making a difference, and thank you for taking time to share all that with us. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Rachel, thank you for being here, and thank you to the Genata family for their continued donation of time and excellence toward this effort. I was very impressed negatively about the numbers about how 1 in 5 and 1 in 7 are food insecure, and that's a problem that we all need to work together to help solve. But positively impressed by the 200 million pounds of food that you move in a given year. So there is effort there to offset the other side of the equation, and we're very proud of you and very happy to work with you on this.
Thank you.
Christian?
And I would echo those comments. I think that, as both of the selectmen have said, the Genatas have served as an example and an inspiration for all of us, and am grateful to you and to the other wonderful organizations that we have who are working to really actively eradicate hunger in our midst. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, one final point. Did I understand correctly, it's 94 cents out of every dollar?
Correct.
Goes directly to your programs and directly to feed those in need?
Exactly.
From a not-for-profit standpoint, that's one of the highest ratios that I've heard.
Absolutely.
So my compliments to you on your efficiency. Certainly, there are some stories we hear from time to time about not-for-profits that don't have that high a ratio. I want to compliment you and your organization on achieving that, and that certainly gives us, as donors, a comfort zone that that much of our money is getting right to the people that need it most. So thank you again.
Well, thank you for recognizing that. Appreciate all of your time, and all of your time, and the Genatas, of course. We really do. Thank you.
Thanks.
See you Monday night.
Great.
All right, next up, to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular meeting of November 4. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
Any comments or discussion on the minutes? We good to go?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item for are some resignations for information only from the Penfield Building Committee. Ken Jones, Democrat, 320 Ferris Road. His resignation date was 11/16. And B, Southwest Regional Mental Health Board, Cheryl Blumenthal, from 326 South Benson Road, for a term of 313 through 316. Her resignation date was 11/05. And then, next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointments. Is it okay to take these all at once?
Sure.
All right. One, Brian Caparelli, Republican, from 129 College Place. Ron Pine, Republican, 36 Highland Road. And James Quinn, Democrat, 508 Wilson Street. All right, the names here? All right. We did put this on rather at the last minute. This is, first of all, may I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second?
Second.
This is for our Election Process Review Committee. And I just want to take a moment to kind of get this in. The goal for this committee, actually, is to have political party balance. So this is 3 people, 2 Republicans and a Democrat. There is a Democrat to be determined at this point. But in reviewing the recent election we had here, there were quite a few people who raised questions on things that happened during our recent Election Day. I am asking this committee to review what happened, compile a list of the issues, causes and actions that have been taken to keep these from happening again. This seemed to be far from the typical Election Day in Fairfield in terms of some of the things that either happened or are rumored to have happened. And I think part of the goal of this committee is to separate fact from fiction. It's critically important that the integrity of the election process and everyone's right to vote is protected in our town. So we're asking the committee to review the items that happened, determine which ones did and which ones didn't, perhaps, and report back to the Board of Selectmen with the cooperation and support of our 2 registrars, but also potentially reaching out to the Secretary of State, the SEC, and some past registrars to see what is normal and perhaps what isn't, checking in with our poll workers and volunteers to see what they saw, the folks that helped with absentee ballots, determine whether there were incorrect ballots handed out, whether multiple ballots were handed out, reviewing the comments from poll workers. Certainly, one was quoted in the news media as saying something about one political candidate that, by appropriate guidelines, should not have been said. Whether the appropriate training was given to our poll workers, whether we had the appropriate number of poll workers, reviewing the voting machine testing, which seemed to have some issues the week before Election Day, and whether there's anything to be done to help improve that or avoid that in the future. And the voting machine breakdown at one of our polling places, and is there kind of reviewing the backup plans in place. It's kind of a rough charge for this committee. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Yeah, sure. I think the purpose of the committee makes a lot of sense. There were significant issues, or there were issues with the election, at least to my knowledge, and where they stem from or what the cause of them are are unknown to me at the moment. So I do think we need to find out what happened and how we can make the election process better. Without question, I support the concept. What I'm not clear on is the exact charge of the committee, if we need to formalize a charge as we add members or before we add members. So that would be my first question. And my second question would be, you know, I don't know what the statutory authority of that committee or even us would be in the process thereafter, since the registrars are, I believe, they are governed by the state, the Secretary of State, at least to a major degree. So if we could have a conversation about that, to kind of get comfortable with, you know, the charge itself, which you just read, and sounds like it makes sense, but we don't have it in front of us to review and to debate and vote on, and then what we think the committee might be able to accomplish, which could end up being part of the charge. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that, you know, one of the things we've struggled for, for those who've followed closely, is there have been a number of issues over the past couple of years with our registrars in terms of how they've conducted themselves, and some of the things that have happened. So one of the questions is, are they effectively working together, and were some of these issues, things could be resolved with better communication? But I think from my personal standpoint, given, as first electman, if I'm hearing these comments coming back, I feel that, not only I have, but we have as a board of selectmen, an obligation to the voters, to the candidates, to the people involved in the election, as well as to the future candidates, that we are doing everything we can to maintain the integrity of our election and the polling. So from that standpoint, some of these things, and my concern is, you know, when you start to hear about things, it's sometimes what takes over is what I call management by rumor. I heard this happen, hey, that's awful, that shouldn't have happened. Well, did it really happen? So I think the first thing to do is determine if anything happened in some of these cases. I had reports back during the day, I was on the phone with both chairs of both political parties during Election Day, based on issues that came up. And that hasn't happened before in my term. And so that's what I'm looking for. It's some clarity in the process, in what actually happened, and what steps are being taken to make sure that we don't have a recurrence. This is Fairfield. We have a history of really well-run elections. And when there are rumors to the contrary, I want to clear those up. If those are wrong, let's get those rumors off the table, to the extent there's substance behind those, be it better training, need for better people, need for better communication, need for better process. Let's get to those. Because the ultimate responsibility, and you're correct, the registrar voters don't report to anybody in our town, or frankly, in our state, though I would like to follow up with the Secretary of State to see, kind of, because this is an election process, what happens with respect to that. We have seen, but ultimately, the registrars are responsible to the voters. And we owe the voters an explanation as to what happened, and then what actions are being taken by that.
And I completely agree with all of that, and I completely agree with the fact that we are responsible as a government and as a town to provide and to safeguard the integrity of every voter, every vote, and every election. So I completely agree with that. So my other question was, have you had a chance to speak with the heads of the 2 parties about this particular motion that's in front of us, this item?
Yes, the nominees came from Mr. Millington and Ms. Dean.
Okay.
I talked through them about the issue. They were supportive, and obviously, they were supportive and nominated the people. I think that, you know, we can certainly kind of write up this charge in more detail, so happy to do that and happy to provide an opportunity for this board to discuss that.
Yeah.
But I wanted to make sure that we were taking action, that we weren't sitting back waiting, and we weren't perceived by the voters as sitting back and ignoring what their questions and concerns have.
Yep.
As I've gone through various events since Election Day, I've had people, social events as well as Veterans Day events, I've had people come up to me and say, "Ask me about absentee ballots. Ask me about this." All right? That's never happened before. So that raises my concern, when it's not even part of the conversation, that people are coming up and raising those issues. So I want to get to the bottom of that, and I think we need, as best we can, a bipartisan group to do that. So it's, much like the registrars themselves are bipartisan, by 1 from each party, we have a bipartisan group to take a look at this.
I just, to follow up on the conversation, a couple of things. And certainly, as someone sitting here in this position, as well as someone who was a candidate in this election, I can see a lot of the validity in a lot of these points. I think my concern today about voting on this is twofold. One is that if we start the committee without everyone in place, then that, I think letting everyone start all together as a group would be great. I agree with, perhaps, not perhaps, actually, I agree with having a written charge that would help just delineate the scope of the group, who they will consult, who will determine who's invited, just a little bit, try and get into a little bit more detail about that. Will there be action items that will come from the group? And back to the question of authority as well, I think there are a number of questions out there. I couldn't agree more with what both of you have said about the integrity of our election process. I think that, you know, there are always going to be some issues that come up on any Election Day, and I think the idea of finding out specifically what did happen, and it's always a great thing to see how we can improve operations. But in terms of being able to move forward on this, I would prefer to wait and have all 4 people together, if that's the plan, to have 4 people, and then to kind of further clarify the role of the group, so that it's clear, not just to the 3 of us, but to the group starting as well.
Is that a motion to postpone?
So that is a motion to postpone this item to...
To a date certain?
Yes, at our next meeting. Yep.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone?
Other than just to agree with it, I think it makes perfect sense, the way you stated it, to kind of get the charge in place, or at least on paper, and fill the committee out, and kind of have those 2 pieces move forward together, and give us time to, you know, think about it a bit, and get some additional input and thoughts from people who are interested in, you know, the events of the election, and then move the process forward. I think that makes a lot of sense.
And certainly, I'm comfortable with that. It's already been 2 weeks since Election Day, and part of my goal was not to have this go on much longer without getting this on the table before this board. So it hit, in terms of documenting that a bit better, also giving enough notice to our potential prospective committee members to attend this, makes good sense to me also, so I can support that. Any further discussion?
Any discussion from the body on the motion to postpone and the motion to postpone only, please? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's postponed to the next, to a date certain, the next Board of Selectmen meeting, which is December 3.
December 3.
Now, we have, let's see, before I make this motion. Mr. Bradley?
Yes, sir.
Is, are you and your representative of your committee ready to make a presentation at this point?
Yes, we don't have anybody here, but that works fine for me.
We can clear the room if that would make it easier, Mr. Bradley, certainly. Is Mr. Mayor about back there?
That'd be the key player.
Yeah.
How do you view this?
Yeah, if, what I'm going to suggest is we go on to...
Osborne?
Hear a report from Osborne Hill, if somebody can check with Mr. Mayor. So when we're done with that...
Wait a minute.
Hmm? Okay, good. When we're done with Osborne Hill, I think we'll entertain a motion to change the agenda and move up the Penfield item. One of the reasons for moving it up is there's RTM subcommittee meetings tonight, and Mr. Mayor needs to be in attendance at those, so we're going to try and take it a bit earlier here. So next up, here is the Osborne Hill Building Committee to hear a report from the Osborne Hill Building Committee. Thank you for joining us today, and if you'll please introduce yourself for the folks at home, so everybody knows who you are.
I am Kim Marshall, and I'm the Chair of the Osborne Hill Building Committee. It's been a while since I was here before, giving you an update. We've hired a general contractor and a clerk of the works. The general contractor was hired in, at the end of June. Our bids had come in somewhat higher than we expected because of the timing of when we were able to put the project out for bid. There was a lot of regulatory review with the state, and the economy, frankly, has been better, so...
Just to clarify, when did the bids go out, come back, and...
April and May, and then the project award was in June. So the work, the way the work was set up, we were going to replace windows and doors... Okay, I knew, okay. We were going to replace windows and doors at the southern end of the school during this past summer. We were going to renovate, abate and renovate the gymnasium concurrently, and into this fall and into the winter, with a completion date in January. And then we'll do the balance of the windows, which is the majority of the windows, next summer. And things went pretty smoothly during the summer with the windows and the doors. We got everything buttoned up, as far as those are concerned, by the start of school, so no school time was lost. We had to replace, we had to abate and replace the slate-type flooring in the hallways, and that had to go into the school year, but the contractors did that work during off-hours, and we had temporary flooring in, so no time was lost there. And the gymnasium work started at the end of August due to a lot of testing and work plans that had to be submitted once the contract was awarded. We anticipate, we're coming in, we're running into unknown conditions due to concealed conditions, as recently as the last couple of days. We hope to have a handle on the exact extent based on testing results, which we should have fairly shortly. It's looking like the gymnasium, which we ideally hoped would be complete by the contractual date at the end of January, we're hoping that would still hold, but it looks like it might go a couple of weeks later. Based on the low level of change orders, which are really in the single digits, for the work having to do with the southern end of the project, we really think the northern end is really not going to be very significant. So right now, we're getting a little tight with our budget because we've been, we've gone into the contingency. Right now, it's looking like we've got about $100,000 less, or left, which probably is not going to be enough, but we'll have a better handle on that in the next probably couple of weeks. So hopefully, we'll be able to turn over the gymnasium in January or early February, and we don't anticipate any scheduling problems during, you know, for the work during next summer. We did have an alternate. We set it up this way to do the connecting corridor, but because of the cost... of the cost and a contingency we'd have to put on that, it's about $450,000. We don't think we're going to have, we know there's no way we can swing that without looking for additional funding, and we understand the climate as far as, you know, being able to get that kind of, that kind of money for the project. So, right now, we've lost no time for school, for the kids, and we're running a little bit late on the gymnasium. We think that the contractors should run into no obstacles for next summer. So, that's it.
Okay. If, just to clarify, part of what you said there, obviously, we're very concerned about kind of the costs on the project.
Mm-hmm.
So, you mentioned that some of the costs came in a little bit higher, you're running tight to the budget. You're going to finish some things up by February. You've got some additional parts of the project that will extend through next summer?
Yes, windows and doors.
Okay. At which point will you be in position to know the best estimate on the cost to complete, and whether any additional funding, because it can take a month or two to get that additional funding authorized?
I think that based on the likelihood of what has to get tested, and then monitoring, and maybe some encapsulation, that kind of thing, I'm guessing in the, certainly by the end of the year we'll know, but it could be within a week or two that we'll have a pretty good handle.
I'd ask that when, as soon as you have that determination, if we can sit down-
Sure.
And kind of review what the approval process is, and some of the key questions we'll need to answer as we go forward on that. But we'll leave that to next week or next month, when you have a little bit better handle on that.
Yeah, we do, I mean, we do have $100,000, and we really used very little, we had very few extras on the southern part, so we're thinking with the windows on the northern part, windows and doors on the northern part, it shouldn't be too bad. But the unknown conditions with the, you know, taking apart masonry walls, taking the roof off, that kind of thing, there, there's only a certain amount of destructive testing that can get done, and there were some unconventional building constructions that have been encountered.
Well, we certainly learned from Riverfield on what we can be, what can be hiding behind the walls that, but-
Well, when I was told what, a few days ago, of something they found, I thought, why would, why would the town have done that, even in the '60s? Why, or why would anybody have built things that way? But, you know, until you take the walls apart, you don't really know. What's typical in one area isn't necessarily typical in another.
All right, thank you. Any questions from our colleagues?
Sure. Thank you for being here. I appreciate the update.
You're welcome.
Couple of things. Could we get an updated project plan on where we are versus where we thought we would be at this point in time?
You mean the schedule?
Schedule, yes, a project, yeah. Well, for both, and then also an updated document on where we are within the budget versus the actual, so that we can see, you know, where we are to date, and where both the timeline that you spoke to and the budget might be heading.
Okay.
Just to get a clearer picture on paper, so that we can, you know, read through that documentation. You mentioned there was $100,000 left in the contingency. How much contingency was there to begin with for this section?
It was 15%, but we had a lot of individual abatement-type costs-
Right.
That really add up. I mean, there are like a unit price type of thing in the bids, and the successful contractor had competitive, you know, costs there.
Do you recall the approximate dollar amount of the total contingency? I was not recalling it off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'd have to look it up.
And was it 15% on about $4 million?
No, like 2.7, so three or four.
About 400?
400, 450.
400.
400,000?
Yeah.
And of that, you've got about 100 left, and you feel pretty good that that's going to get you through at least what you know so far? Is that what I kind of heard?
Yeah, yeah. We could get really good news.
You could, yeah.
But still, you don't like to have, to cut it too tight.
It could also go the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah. And my other question, and again, thank you for the update, is the connecting corridor. Can you just speak a little bit about that? I know it's in the project as an alternate, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, and this might be a question for Sal or somebody from the administration side, I just want to be clear that it needs to be an alternate versus a, you know, component of the project, you know, from a security perspective. And I know we talked about this, but it's been a while. Just to refresh us on the importance and the integrity of the connecting corridor to the project.
It's an important aspect of the overall project, but because we were concerned about cost-
Right.
With the economy improving, and with essentially a six-month approval process that should have been six weeks up at the state level, everything, you know, slid into a busier time of the year with bids. We broke out the alternate as a completely, or as an alternate, rather than have it be part of the project, the base project, because quite frankly, if everything was way over budget, then we wouldn't have been able to start. And a lot of work had to get done this summer and next summer only.
Right.
But I think that, I think that it's definitely an excellent idea in terms of safety-
Right.
-to have that corridor. It would, it would look really great and be a safe, secure, enclosed passage between the classrooms and the main building.
Right. And back to Mr. Tetrel's point about the timeline for additional funding, should it be necessary for anything, you know, when I think about that, and then when I think about a connecting corridor that, as I recall, was a pretty, a pretty important part of the project, that is now not part of the project, or at least is an alternate that we might do if we have the money, if we can. So, it kind of raises a concern with me that, you know, number one, we might not be doing it, and second to that, you know, if we, if we don't do it, it comes back to the old, well, maybe we can do it later thing, but we never get around to coming back and doing things later, because the next project in the pipeline comes up, the next school, the next building. So, it's one of those things that, if it's that important, and I thought it was, that why, I mean, are there any alternatives to doing it less expensively, or in a different manner that could drive the cost down? Or is it something worth coming back for and saying, "We don't want it to be an alternative, we want it to be part of the project, and therefore, we want to address the funding for that component now upfront," and have it make its way into the project?
I would rather-
I just don't want to finish the project and have it not done, and then wish we had done it.
I would rather have it be part of the project, but $450,000 is a lot of money to ask for, especially if we're concerned about the amount of money that we have left now. The contractor had a, I believe it was 120-day period where he had to hold the price for the connector building, which has expired, and we've told them that we're, we don't have the money to go ahead with that. But I believe that we could negotiate something if there is going to be the opportunity to get some money in the next, I mean, essentially, I think we'd have to know by, say, March, in order for all the materials to get ordered, and to have everything complete for August.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing is we don't have the money today, it's not in the project today, but we think it's still important enough to be part of the project-
Yes.
But we haven't gone so far down the road that if we decide to put it in, we have a little time to make that decision and find the money, should we go down that road, and should you guys advocate for it?
I think that we've probably got about four months before a decision we have to get made, and to still be able to get the project done for the start of the 2015 school year.
Inclusive of the corridor, should that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure that I understand the timeline and the decision points along the way.
Yes, and I know that there was, there had been an attempt to get some funding for security, and quite frankly, that's a very important aspect of having the corridor. And, but we'll make it work without that, to some extent.
Yeah. I know you will, and I greatly value that, that you can do that, but I just, I'm not completely convinced, with what little I know right here, that the project without that is the same project that I supported when we voted on it. So, I just want to make sure that we address that, and get everyone's input, and make sure that that's the outcome that we want, or not.
Yep. Building on that, there's basically two options at this point. One is to identify that as an issue and come back to the boards for an increase in funding for the overall project. The second option is to break that out and run that through a non-recurring process, which we'll be starting shortly, and get approval for just the $450,000, which I think with appropriate paperwork, and I'm going to turn to Sal and Tom to noodle on that for a bit, can we, regardless of the source of the funding, whether it's a different approval by us, can we include it in projects so the reimbursement process stays in place for that component? You don't need to answer that now, but I think that we want to identify what Plan B is sooner rather than later, and given the time it takes the various town bodies to approve additional funding, and to allow them both get comfortable with it, have the discussion, and decide whether to move forward, that we want to start on that sooner rather than later, for either the overall project or breaking out as a, either one gets money. There might be reasons based on state statute and state reimbursement process that say it's better to do one than the other. I will leave that to the Board of Administration in terms of what's taking place there, but I think that you should put that on the agenda for adopting a strategy for that sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Because you can continue with the project as it is while that approval process is going forward. But then you'll know in a March timeframe, as opposed to waiting till March and trying to move it through quicker than might otherwise be possible.
Well, during, as far as when the bids did come in, I mean, they, we did go with the low bidder, and the prices, the other bidders were much higher, so I think we got a good deal with the contractor we did go with. And I think because the construction economy is getting better and better, it, it would be ideal to take advantage of it now. But quite honestly, asking for a good part of a half a million dollars on a 400, or $4 million project seemed like a lot to be asking for. But we will look into that.
Yeah, I think at this point, the Building Committee needs to decide how important that is. And then if it's deemed important, then let's kind of have that discussion while there's still an option to add it on.
Okay.
All right. If it's voted down, then that's, you know, another issue, but if it's voted up, then you have a chance to include it. But unless you start moving quickly on that, my concern is that you'll miss the window of opportunity, and the approval process might take too long, even if it's a positive response.
Okay. Back in June, because of, you know, knowing what we had to work with, we were going to wait until October to make a decision, because you get involved with an existing building like a gymnasium, we just thought there are just so many ways that could go badly.
Right.
And we're far enough into it to have a pretty good handle, and quite frankly, we are finding some things, but they may be able to be resolved still within our budget, or what we have left in our budget.
Please, please don't take any of these comments as critical of the decision you made or the process up till now.
We really want-
The concern is more, what I'd call one more of coaching in the approval process. We may not know the construction, the issues you're facing, we've kind of been through the approval process before, and we know kind of what some of the speed bumps are as we go through that. So, that the, we would encourage you, if I'm okay speaking for the board, to-
Yeah.
-start that evaluation soon rather than-
Absolutely, we're here to help you.
We've got a meeting tomorrow night, so that'll be topic A on our agenda.
Absolutely.
I mean, it really would be a terrific asset to the school, and it adds a level of security.
Exactly.
And it is what you guys agreed to.
And just one last thing on the security piece, and you briefly mentioned, are there any options out there for any funding for security-related type of school projects? Are there any grants, or is there anything that could help us offset that 450?
We tried to look into that, but I think we were not successful-
Okay.
-because there must be demand for that same money faster.
The short answer is yes, there is, and I know the Superintendent and his team have been looking into different grant opportunities. There are, I'm going to call tranches, you know, groups of funds that are made available. I believe in the last tranche, that a number of the awards went to school districts that are in less financially affluent communities than ours. We had been successful in getting some grants in the past. There will be an opportunity to go after some in the future, but I think the last scout, go around other communities, receive a priority. If, is that correct? Okay. Kristen, did you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, and thank you also, and to the committee, and I know there are other members of the committee who are here present as well, for your work. Just to make sure that I'm hearing correctly, even if you get the best news possible with the unforeseen circumstances, there still isn't enough funding to do the enclosure and the walk-in?
Right. We, I would really hate to commit any of what we have left towards the connector at all. Something, we're really talking about $450,000.
Okay. So, just clarifying that, I know you're still waiting to find out with the unforeseen circumstances, and I would just concur with the comments as well. I think unforeseen circumstances are part of what we deal with. We'll be talking about it again in a few minutes with the other Building Committee who's here. We talked about it last time, and probably will again. With Penfield, it's part of what happens in construction projects, but I, too, when we supported this project, I think that that connection, that piece, that feature was really a critical element as well. I know that first things first, and you're doing what you need to do first, so I appreciate that, and the ongoing work, and the ongoing conversation that will be here-
Sure.
-with you as well. So, thanks.
Well, we can jump on that tomorrow night, with our meeting. So, I will, you'll hear from you shortly, as soon as the process comes-
Yes, please, let's plan to sit down and review that as soon as you have a little bit more information on the direction from the committee. In the meantime, thank you very much for the update today.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye for now. Next up, I'd like to take one item out of order, the update on the Penfield Billing, Building Committee. We have an RTM Subcommittee meeting later that Mr. Mayor needs to attend, so if it's okay with the board, if you want to accept a motion to take item number 15 out of order.
Sumo.
A second?
Second.
All right, thank you. So, next item on the agenda then is item 15, the Penfield Building Committee, to hear, consider, and adopt a bond resolution appropriating funds for the repair of Penfield Pavilion, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. I have a motion to accept.
Sumo.
A second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Bradley, thank you for joining us today, and thank you for your committee holding a special meeting last evening to reconsider your recommendations and review the finances. Could you please give us an update on what you have to report?
Some that's a little repetitive, but good evening, I'm Jim Bradley, Chairman of the Penfield Building Committee, and here to present a recommended Penfield Build and Repair Project that is different than the one previously recommended by the Building Committee and presented to the Board of Selectmen. As you know, the Building Committee recommended Penfield Repair Option 7 to the Board of Selectmen on November 5th, and then the Board of Finance on November 13th. Repair Option 7 assumes that the west wing of the damaged pavilion building, including the gathering hall, kitchen facilities, concession, restrooms, first aid and lifeguard offices, would be temporarily relocated in the parking lot and repaired. During that time, new timber pile-supported foundations would be constructed, and the west wing would be relocated on the new foundations at the FEMA-required elevation. Deck's ramps and stairs would be reconstructed. Option 7 also assumes that the east wing, that includes the lockers and additional restroom- restrooms, would be demolished and not rebuilt. New restrooms, showers, and changing rooms, and day lockers would be designed and constructed within the footprint of the previously demolished east wing, and as a addition to the, in the footprint of the east wing as an addition to the west wing. Finally, the existing timber bulkhead would be protected with riprap stone below the grade of the beach, and the final elevation of the site would be increased in height to help mitigate future inland flooding. Design development drawings were created and presented for Option 7, and utilized as a basis for preparation of the proposed project budget. During the first two weeks of November, the town received better and more detailed information regarding criteria for FEMA reimbursement, assuming different Penfield repair and rebuild scenarios. At the conclusion of the Building Committee's presentation to the Board of Finance, there was a discussion regarding FEMA reimbursement and project funding scenarios that indicated that adding back the east wing and lockers would not have a significant long-term cost impact when compared to the previously recommended Option 7. The Chairman and Director of Parks and Recreation were especially interested in including the lockers in the repair project if financially feasible. The Board of Finance decided to take no action, and recommended that the Building Committee review the cost of adding back the lockers and the impact of FEMA funding options for that particular repair. I would also like to confirm at this point that the decision by the Board of Finance to take no action really had no impact on whether or not the Penfield would be ready for the 2015 summer season. The Building Committee had previously determined and stated that the, given the changes of addressing additional low cost, so-called low-cost, no-cost options, and the need to clarify FEMA funding, that the pavilion facility would likely not be ready by the summer of The Building Committee supported the Board of Finance's recommendation to review an option that included the lockers, and review and coordinate the impact of the latest FEMA funding criteria and reimbursement scenario. The day of the Board of Finance meeting, the committee initiate, the day after the Board of Finance meeting, the committee initiated a review by the project engineer and construction manager to determine the scope and cost for an option that would add back the locker wing. The Building Committee scheduled a special meeting for yesterday, November 18th, to hear, consider, and act upon a repair option that included lockers. The town chief fiscal officer, Parks and Recreation Chair and Director were also invited and attended. The Building Committee was presented and reviewed a project repair option, which we have designated 7A, not to be confused with anything else. This option assumes a 7 as a baseline, and add back, and adds back the east wing lockers and restrooms as new construction, assuming a pile-supported foundation, and finish to the current FEMA requirements, matching the repaired, the presumed repaired and raised west wing. Option 7A also assumes a certain amount of redesign related to the locker size and layout, access, decks, and ramps, and stairs. However, all proposed new construction remain, would remain within the footprint of the existing structure, which is an important FEMA requirement. The construction manager has revised the cost summary sheet, which I believe has been circulated, to include Option 7, and now Option 7A, along with the reference only options of 1, repair and protect in place, 8, complete demolition, and 9, complete demolition and design and construction of a new, smaller pavilion facility. The Building Committee considered a repair option similar to the proposed Option 7A during June and July this year. At that time, the add-back lockers option was designated as Option 3C. The current conceptual project budget for Option 7A is higher than 3C due to the addition of soft costs, owner's costs not included at the time, in the June and July comparative analysis, and added costs for increased site elevation, added contingency, and the ability for us to use, or the estimators now to use, the design development drawings for a more definitive scope of work for Option 7, which again is the baseline for Option 7A. As mentioned last night, the Chair of Parks and Recreation Commission met with the Penfield Building Committee, and immediately afterwards, the Chairman of the Penfield Building Committee attended the meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission. After careful consideration and based on the most recent FEMA information and financial analysis as provided to the Building Committee by the Town Finance Department, the Penfield Building Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission voted to recommend and support Option 7A, inclusion of the locker wing, as the recommended Penfield Pavilion Repair Project. Prior to consideration of the recommendation of the Penfield Building Committee and the request for project funding, I'm hoping that Bob Mayor, who's here, will have an opportunity to explain the FEMA criteria and the project funding scenarios for Option 7 and 7A, since they were critical and critically important to our discussion and decision. That's where we are at the moment, we're back.
All right. Mr. Bradley, thank you, and may come back, but I think, just to clarify the process that's gone through, I think the Parks and Rec Commission held a meeting last night, also to clarify.
Right.
And just to kind of confirm their position and standing fast, the, either the Chair or the Director of Parks and Rec. Mr. Row, yes, if you would, up to the podium, and just kind of update us on your board's thoughts going forward from here.
Well, dating back to the July meeting that we had at Parks and Rec, when Mr. Bradley came in and presented the Penfield Building Committee information and all the options, we clearly stated that it was our preference from the beginning to rebuild the entire facility the way it had been, to repair everything. However, at the time in July, we thought that the difference between what we're now calling Option 7, the west wing and the bathrooms and the shower facility replacing where the east wing lockers are, and the complete restructure of the lockers as well, we believed that the difference was $3 million. Even if we were to secure 75% repayment, reimbursement from FEMA, $750,000, while we would love to have the whole thing, we did not think that that was a fiscally responsible option for us to support, and we did fully embrace the Option 7 that the Penfield Building Committee was presenting. Last week, when we, just prior to the Board of Selectmen meeting, when we saw the most updated numbers, and we saw that the rebuild of the entire project, including the locker facility, was actually, at the time, projected to be $1 million difference, again with the 75% assumption, the $250,000 incremental cost to the town, which if we rebuilt, would reestablish our revenue stream of $38,000, give or take, a year for the locker rentals. We, at that time, wanted to reconsider that option, and possibly change our support from Option 7 to what is now considered 7A. In the few days after the Board of Selectmen until last night, the numbers changed a little bit, so that the incremental cost, as I understand it today, is not $250,000 for 7A versus net $250,000 from 7A to 7, but rather a net $367,000. Those are the latest numbers that I have seen, and even with the additional $117,000, the 367 versus 250, if our, if we can, if we believe that the $38,000, which we do believe will continue, our lockers, we have a waiting list for the lockers, and we do, we are going to consider the fees potentially increasing them, but even if they stay the same, if we can generate $38,000 annually at a cost of $367,000, over 10%, a repayment period of, you know, call it nine years, we fully support that, and the board did vote last night to support 7A.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if we go to the finance, get the whole package, then we have questions on everything.
It's up to you guys.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if you'd come up and give us the update on the new numbers, so we have everything involved with this project before us.
So everybody's doing, making clarifications of human myths, if I did make one clarification, there really is no new FEMA information. What is new is that the numbers that we're being worked with, the project cost numbers, were applied to the FEMA calculations, and with that, it's new information, because the net is much different than the gross, as Brian pointed out in his comments. You have a package, I'd like you to turn to page 2 of the package. We were here last time, a couple weeks ago, I guess it was, we talked about, I think, six different options.
Page 2 labeled, or the second page?
Page 2, page 2, page 2 labeled.
Okay, so it's the fourth page, got it.
These are the two options that, the one on the left is 7A, PBC Option 7A, the one right, PBC Option 7. 7A being the one repair in place and elevate, that's the maintaining pretty much the same footprint, the same facility, the same building, the same benefits to the taxpayer, to the residents of the town. The, on the right-hand side, 7 is the building without the lockers. You can see that the difference side by side here, it's without the lockers, it's $4.5 million, with the lockers, it's $6 million. You have a million and a half dollar difference there. The calculation is the same on both, in both boxes, you take that top number, you reduce it by the insurance recovery, then you get credit for $1,000 of the deductible, and you end up with a net facility cost on 7A of $3,779, and $2,309,399 for Option 7. Then you apply the FEMA reimbursement 75% formula to that number, and so the total project cost, excuse me, the FEMA cost is, FEMA reimbursement is $2,834 in Option 7A versus $1,732 in Option 7, which is a million, $1,100,000 difference, I guess. So then you take the, the total, the bottom half of both boxes is the town funding calculation. We have, you start with the total project cost, the $6 million versus the $4.5 million, reduced by the FEMA amount, and then reduced by the community development block grant funds, then you have like a town total cost. This is the dollars that comes out of the town's coffers. 1.75 of that was insurance recovery from the loss of the facility, so you end up with a net town funding for the project, when you deduct that insurance recovery from the total of $943,000, $944,000 for Project 7A with lockers versus $576,000 without lockers. And Brian was quite correct, that's a $367,000 difference. Now, I want to flip to page 3 before I go in to explain one thing, and then talk a little bit more about FEMA and the process. Okay, now, this is still Option 7. This is the very same Option 7 that we just discussed on the prior page. It's the same Option 7 we discussed last week. The difference between this Option 7 and the Option 7 on the prior page is very simply a definitional difference. When FEMA reimburses for a project, they have, they identify the project as being either repair in place and improve, or a FEMA alternative project. 7 has the possibility of being designated by FEMA as either of those for the following reasons. It is a smaller footprint, the size of the facility is reduced by, what, 7,000 feet? About 7,000 square feet.
We're moving between page 2 and page 2A.
Well, I'm just, I'm on just page 2A, right, the next page, right.
And you said 3.
I said 3, I'm sorry, I apologize, apologize, apologize.
2A.
Thank you very much.
Give me back to where I'm supposed to be.
Okay, page 2A, I didn't, I thought we got rid of the A's and the Bs, there's too many on the round.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so I'll back up a little bit. So FEMA can designate a project as an alternative project or repair and improve in place project. The difference, that's a very key difference, because it results in a different funding formula by FEMA. The process, the calculation we went through on the prior page, you take the cost, reduce it by the insurance recovery, multiply it by 0.75%, that formula is based strictly on the project cost, the actual project cost. Building Committee will put this out the bid, they'll come back with a number, that would be the number that would be plugged in there on the prior page, and then you reduce it by the insurance recovery, take 75% of that number. That would be the reimbursement. However, if they designate it an alternative project, it's a different calculation. What FEMA does for alternative projects is they go through an analysis, and they say, and they calculate for themselves based upon the information that we've provided them and then their, what they think a repair in kind cost would be.
Thanks.
So, that calculation with a lot of back, they have all the engineering documents and work that's been done, sought by all the various engineers that have worked for the town to evaluate this project. They have all that information, they have information from our, from Whit O'Brien, our consultants, that put it through the FEMA CEF cost estimate format, formula, and they came up with a number. This is not a mitigation number, that includes no mitigation. Mitigation is not reimbursable under an alternative project. They say that, that the cost to repair this building would be $4,128,000. That then becomes the max, if they designated an alternative project, that becomes the maximum that they will reimburse the town. And then there's a difference in the actual mathematics as well, it's not a straight 75, you basically, that number is multiplied by 90%, decimal 9, to come up with the amount that's actually FEMA-eligible. So you take the 4128 times decimal 9, FEMA-eligible cost for this project, if designated alternative, would be $3,715,200. You reduce that number by the 200, $2,250, $2,250,000 insurance recovery, which is the 1.750 we receive from Kerma, the insurance company, plus our $500,000 deductible, we end up with $1,466,000. That is then multiplied, that then becomes the number that is multiplied by 0.75 to determine the FEMA reimbursement amount. So the FEMA reimbursement around, if FEMA designated this project, an alternative project, would be $1,099, versus if they designated it an improved project, would be $1,732. Okay, why could it be designated an improved project? Well, it's an alternative project because it is smaller. Well, it's an alternative project because it is smaller. The footprint is reduced. It is a different building. The lockers aren't there. However, the project is improved because it's elevated, it's mitigated, it's strengthened. So it is not certain that FEMA would go one way or the other. I will quote Bob, Bruce Smith, the FEMA consultant we work with the most often, he said, "It's purely a crapshoot." So that brings us now down to the bottom line. If it's designated a, you take the $4,558 minus the $1,099 minus, because this is still, this project is still meets FEMA codes and standards, so we, we do earn the community development block grant $500,000. So then the net cost, if this is an alternative project, becomes $1,208,749. So that kind of is the numbers as to our cost. And obviously, you put them in order, you could turn to, you know, you can see that the, our cost is greater if it's a 7A project, excuse me, if it's a FEMA alt project. The, with the lockers is in the middle, it's $300,000 less, and then seven without the lockers, if it's designated an improved project, is another $360,000 less with 576. So then the next aspect of a financial consideration, okay, what does this mean for the town? So we asked, we being the finance department, requested from Mr. Lombardo, what his revenues and expenses would be for this project, for this building, for this facility.
Page you're looking at?
And we're going to page three, thank you, Jim. In fact, why don't you go all the way back to appendix A? So appendix A has two pages. Revenues and expenses are different on the two pages because 7A includes the lockers and the changing room revenue and the salary expenses and wages associated with that function. The second page of 7A does not have that revenue. As you can see, basically, Mr. Lombardo has this as a buildup, where you can see like the rental income, year one, I'm on, I'm on the first page of the appendix, $75,000. Now, these years are full 12-month years. They're four seasons, regardless of when the building is open. So it's not a fiscal year, but it is a 12-month year, it is a four season, a full year. Jerry, Jerry figured, thing gets back in place, might save some time to wrap it all up. Changing rooms, they're very, very certain that that, you know, they have a waiting list, that revenue is fairly certain. They feel strongly about the concession fees, the parking revenues, people attend, but they're thinking that to get the revenues for the rentals back up to where they were before the storm, it might, might take some time. So you see that actually goes from $75,000 up to the $175,000 in year three. What we did then, in the finance department, if you go to labeled page four, we took those revenues and expenses and we inflated them at two, from year three forward at 2% per year. Okay, so, and, and that gives you the, the numbers here on page four, for the three options we're looking at. 7A being the current recommended option. So you come down, you take the revenues, 20, this is a 20-year model, the first year really is irrelevant, because it's, because it's time that counts here. So you take, you got your, so you got your surplus from operations, $5,300,000 7A, $4,006 for both seven and seven FEMA alternatives, because it's the same building, same facility. All right, then you have, for each of these, if you remember back, we have to, they cost us money. This is the debt service, you have the debt service for the new facility, the 20 years of debt service, the money you'd have to borrow to pay. Obviously, seven is the least expensive, so it has the lower debt service. 7A is the second least expensive, therefore it has the second highest, or second lowest and second highest debt service. And the FEMA alt, which costs us the most money out of pocket, has the highest debt service. So you end up there with a 20-year cash flow projection of $4 million for seven, $3,850 for 7A, excuse me, $3,850 for seven, and $3 million for seven FEMA alternative process, project. Now, so that's the cash flow, and if you're thinking, we're going to use this 1.75 million that the insurance account is, to build a facility, the next line, in a way, is not really relevant. However, from a financial perspective, it's very relevant, because included in all of these three options is the utilization of that 1.75 million. So what is the cost of using that? Well, the cost of using that is the 1.75 million, plus the interest that we would earn on it over the 20-year period. So the net monetary town capital cost benefit to the town is then the surplus minus the cost, so the benefit 7A with lockers, $1.8 million dollars with 7A, without lockers, $1.575, and if it's designated FEMA alt, $759,000. So, so regardless of, so doing, building the building and assuming the assumptions incorporated into this document, all three options are beneficial to the town versus tearing it down or any other, the other options. No question about that. And there's, there's definitely, you know, a $200,000, $225,000 overall benefit to 7A, plus we have the lockers, and, and once the debt's paid off, obviously, that just, because we're, the debt's in here 20, 20-year bond issuance. So the contribution to the town revenue grows year 21 forward. And that's all I have to say.
Want a little bit of information to absorb at this point. Can we take a?
I had a request for a five-minute break, just to give us time to both absorb this and come back, so please don't go away.
Yes. We'll be right back in five minutes.
Thanks.
But, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and we'll be back with some questions and clarifications.
Thanks.
Follow the meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience and allowing for the break. Now that we've kind of had all three parts of the presentation, open up the questions to the board, certainly questions on any part of the presentation are welcome. Kristen, go right ahead.
I will start. First of all, I don't see Mr. Bradley in the room, but I, I was thinking a little bit about Groundhog Day when, when he came back up, but thanks to everyone for coming back. And, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you regarding your presentation. At the last meeting, one of the things that I talked about in moving the project forward at the time, as it was, was just risk and kind of calculated risk, which is clearly what we do whenever we vote on funding for building projects, because we have unforeseen circumstances that occur. But I'd like to get clarification on your comment from the FEMA consultant, which you quoted, "It's purely a crapshoot." Now, I'd like to clarify that, if I could.
Good luck.
So, we talked about this a little bit last time. I asked about this in terms of the categorization of the project. And again, we won't know for certain until we have funded the project and apply, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so when you were talking about that, it was in the context of the FEMA alternative piece?
That is the only question, yes, whether seven becomes an alternative or, or not, or improved.
So the only question, or the real question is with option seven, but with 7A, there's less of a crapshoot.
Well, actually, 7A, and thank you for asking this question, and in fact, I should have mentioned this earlier. If you take option 7A, basically, it's a repair and improve of the original facility. So it is the option that has the greatest level of assurance that it would be fully funded to the optimal amount by FEMA.
And based on a comment that you made last night at the building committee meeting, if I can clarify the, kind of the simple version of that, which is, because the footprint is the same, and because the functionality of the facility is the same, the only difference is the fact that it's been raised to help with hazard mitigation or flood mitigation. It's perceived as an improved project, because everything else is the same other than the elevation.
Correct, that's correct. And, and the other difference is, and you do receive reimbursement for mitigation expenses, they have to be approved, they have to be, you know, by FEMA, they're not all automatic, for repair and improve projects. You do not receive mitigation reimbursement for mitigation expenditures under an alternative project. So that 4.128 million dollar number is FEMA's calculation purely of repair. There's no mitigation in there, because they would not approve mitigation under that.
All right, and if I might, again, based on the comments last night, the reason for that relative to option seven and the seven alternatives, because without the locker wing, for any of the proposals here, without the lockers, that is a change in functionality, because it no longer has lockers, it's a change in footprint, because it no longer has that wing.
Correct.
What is before us is not a project that would be considered an alternative. What is before us is option 7A, which has the same footprint, the locker wing, and the same functionality as the project on, as the facility on October 28th, with the exception of the elevation.
Right, the reason we, I bring in the alternative project is because the prior approved project is subject to that reimbursement risk. So that's why I bring that information. The current recommended project by Mr. Bradley and his committee is not subject to that risk.
Sorry, I didn't mean to distract, I just wanted to clarify.
No.
Just on that point, if I may?
Go ahead, I do have a follow-up as well, but...
Okay, because, and that's now very clear, thank you. And along the lines of being clear, when you read, and this is partial, partially due to the presentation or the wording, I believe, when you're on page four, for example, and you're looking at the headers underneath the projects, right? Looking at PBC 7 first, on this document, it says, "Reconstruct original facility without lockers." I understand that, but inherent is that, inherent in that description is, we're moving the building to the parking lot, we're going to fix the building, and we're going to bring the building back.
Correct.
Right? When you read the header under PBC 7A, repair and place and elevate, okay? At first glance, when you read that, it sounds like, okay, we're repairing the building, we're going to elevate it, but doesn't say, it, it doesn't imply, at least based on what I previously understood, that you're moving it, fixing it, bringing it back, which is exactly what you are doing, similar to 7A, or similar to seven, except for the locker piece that needs to be reconstructed. So is that, those are true statements.
Those are true statements. See, we picked up that language somewhere, and we just carry it forward, but yeah.
Right.
All repair options are move it, repair it, move it back.
Got it, that was not crystal clear to me last time around. And, and it is now, I was at the meeting last night.
We've done our best to confuse people, we changed option numbers, different options.
It's not that hard to tell. And so, just carrying forward, and this, this might be a little form over substance, but I'm just trying to make sure that the, that the documents are consistent. When you go back to this document provided by Shawmet, you know, they have slightly different headers or descriptions underneath the same options. You know, their seven specifically says, "Remove east wing and west wing on new foundation," and their 7A says, "Rebuild east wing and move west wing on new foundation." So there's, just, just a little inconsistencies between the descriptions and headers on those two documents, and I, I do think that did cause some confusion, specifically on my part, just, just to be clear on that.
Thank you, I'll change all that before we get to the next body.
And just one last question on this particular document, just to be clear, this, you know, this document here from Shawmet talks about options one, seven, 7A, eight, and nine, but options one, eight, and nine are just here for illustration purposes, obviously not for debate or vote or deliberation. It's, it's just part of the construction document that has followed through.
Right, I deleted those from this presentation based upon the action of this board last meeting.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any additional consideration of those options based on this piece of paper that's in my pile.
Right.
Good, all right. Kristen, thank you.
Just to go back to my original line of questioning in terms of the risk factor, and when we look at the new proposal that's before us, and I think I asked a similar question last time, and again, I already understand that we don't know for certain until we apply, until approval has been received from all town bodies and we've applied. But with the new option, what, what kind of certainty do you have that we will receive FEMA reimbursement at the rates that we are talking about here, based on your conversation with Mr. Morris, is it?
Oh, there's Bruce Smith and there's Bill Riley. I have never worked with FEMA myself, but Mr. Riley and Mr. Smith both feel very strongly, when I say I never worked with FEMA, I mean prior, obviously I worked with FEMA a lot in the last six weeks, but, but prior, but they, they feel very strongly that these projects, 7A and seven, F and improved project, but 7A specifically, is optimal with respect to FEMA reimbursement potential, and is, they feel very, very strongly that we realize the full potential, the full 75% of the, now, what will happen is, Mr. Bradley will go out to bid, he'll get construction, he'll go get bid, that information will go to FEMA. Now, there's, there's a BERM in there, there's some other things in there that are not directly FEMA related, but they, the argument is, is made that, well, if there is, you know, more flooding, that it would control the washback, et cetera, et cetera, and reduce the potential for damage to the building. We will make that case, okay? And they might, they might approve that, they might not approve that. I think there's about, what, $200,000 of those types of things in, in there, but they're in all three of them, so it wouldn't change the relativity among the three projects. It would just change, there'd be some items that they, they may not approve. We can't guarantee they'll approve everything, but, but there's a high degree of comfort and confidence on the part of our FEMA consultants, Whit O'Brien, that this would be optimally funded.
So just to clarify, if I may, then the numbers that we're looking at in terms of the FEMA reimbursements include everything we hope would get reimbursed, including the $200,000 that, or other funds that might be related to the BERM and anything else?
Yes, those expenditures, yes.
I have one question on that, just...
If I just might make a clarification on that.
Please, please.
The, from a standpoint of reimbursement, this is the same situation that we run into on every project, every building project where we get reimbursements. They are always subject to reimbursement for all eligible costs. Those eligible costs, while described upfront, are also determined in their final judgment Those eligible costs, while described upfront, are also determined in their final judgment after the project is built. That's why with school projects, as much as our reimbursement rate is somewhere around twenty-seven percent, we very often end up somewhere around twenty-two percent, because certain of the costs are not deemed eligible by the state body that reviews those. We have that issue with potentially highway projects with DOT, other things, so, one of the reasons for hiring the FEMA consultants, folks that have worked with FEMA, not only in storms Sandy, but that's been their career, is so we have their best judgment, not just our hope, but their best judgment as to what is reasonable and what isn't. And that has worked, not only on the Penfield Pavilion, but this is something we're using on every single project that we've put in for FEMA reimbursement. If you will remember going back to January 2013, we put in $5 million worth of projects. That was based on getting seventy-five percent reimbursement under the FEMA program. So, this is not new, in prior storms, we have gotten seventy-five percent reimbursement for things like overtime and other components that are related to the storm. So, this is a similar program, a similar reimbursement, albeit perhaps a different methodology because of the nature of the building and what exactly we're doing, it's not as straightforward as overtime. But we still, even within an overtime formula, it's still based on who is the person, when did they do it, when did they work the overtime, was the jobs Sandy-related. Nemo, the big, during storm Nemo, in the reimbursement process there, the big negotiation was what was the seventy-two hour window in which we would get costs reimbursed on? And we actually sat down and looked at the town expenses versus the board of ed expenses, and tried to pick a window that optimized the maximum reimbursement to the town, whether it be board of ed expenses or town expenses, because we had to use the same window for both in going through that. So, I just wanted to clarify that pretty much every reimbursement we get is subject to that key phrase, all eligible expenses, that's always reviewed after the fact. So, I didn't want to make it sound like other projects were guaranteed, we are never guaranteed a specific amount for reimbursement, it's always subject to review, but, so I just wanted to clarify that. Sorry to interject, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, excellent clarification.
Can I follow on on the risk? And I agree with everything you just said about, we never know until we get there, right?
Yeah.
It's the reimbursement game, or the situation...
One of the questions that's arisen, both at, from some members of the audience, you know, is this guaranteed? And the answer is no, but nothing is ever guaranteed from that standpoint.
That's correct, right, yeah, thank you for that clarification. So, this back to Selectman McCarthy Bahe's comment on the risk, I just wanted to kind of make sure I clearly understand it. When I'm looking at the risk, just seven versus the seven alternate, okay? So, stop me when I'm wrong. When we look at seven versus seven A, the differences or the outcomes appear to be, or seven versus the seven alternate, excuse me, on seven, you know, the hope is that we get seventy-five percent of the total project cost of roughly four point six, just looking at that one FEMA component, versus if it's viewed alternatively by FEMA, we would possibly be getting seventy-five percent of ninety percent to four point one million dollars. And that drives the math, and at the, at the end of the schedule, there's a difference of $632. So, when you look at those two calculations, based on those two scenarios, what I'm hearing very clearly tonight and last night, is that it's the opinion of the administration and yourself, and the FEMA consultants, that the risk of that happening is, is enough to lean you back toward the project seven A, because there's more knowns there as far as getting reimbursed without having that potential alternative calculation kick in.
Well, I don't speak for the administration, but from a pure financial perspective, I think the answer would be yes.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard.
And I would add it slightly different than that, though I agree with what Mr. Mayor just said. The other issue...
I don't speak for you.
That too.
The other issue specifically is that with option seven A, as it's called tonight, there's a reimbursement risk, which is what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm, yep.
But there's also a lower financial risk overall, because we have a stronger revenue stream over the next twenty years. So, when I look at that, I'm looking at the flood mitigation risk, the financial risk, and because we're raising it, we're lowering our flood mitigation risk and risk of future damage by constructing it closer to the FEMA guidelines in terms of using the same footprint and same functionality. We're lowering our risk of not being qualified for as much FEMA money as we might otherwise, and we're lowering our long-term financial risk to the town because we have a stronger revenue stream made up of specifically the locker revenue that we wouldn't have in option, in the other options being, that were considered but not being recommended at this time. And again, what's before us is option seven A, which is with the lockers, with the same footprint, not a raised elevation.
Yeah, let me kind of say that in another way, basically, the revenue stream from the lockers more than makes up for the difference in the cost of seven A versus seven.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Normally, he says things simpler than I do, but this time it's...
Obviously, I'm rubbing off on you.
No, thank you for those clarifications, I do appreciate it.
Kristin, go right ahead.
Thank you, I, this time I actually have a question for Mr. Bradley, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the clarification. Mr. Bradley, you missed me saying thank you, and that it feels a little like Groundhog Day, so I'm glad to see you back, though. And I just wanted to ask a question that in prior meetings, at separate points in time, both Selectman and Kylie and I have talked about accessibility issues, and one difference is that today, unlike the past two times that you were here, we had the drawings that showed what things would look like. We don't have that today, obviously, because of the compressed timeline with, and with some of the changes, but I guess I just would ask from you some reassurances that with the addition of the lockers back on, that we would, again, be sure that we had the kind of accessibility for those who are movement impaired, or those who are using strollers or wagons, or anyone who needed that extra assistance with the ramps? If you could just share with us how we can know that that will happen?
Well, we did discuss it, and that's one of the reasons why in my report to you tonight, I said that there were going to be some adjustments in the ramps, decks, and so forth, as compared to what's there now. There are some ideas that were discussed this morning about better accessibility and modifying some of the access points to the locker area, changing it a little bit. It's going to have to change because it's going up three and a half feet, and we have this tiered site now that we didn't have before. So, yes, we're very conscious of that, and without any prompting, Friday and this morning, we had these two different conversations that also talked about that, so...
So, you're, just to confirm, you all, as a building committee, are already taking action steps?
We will, we're not taking action, but we are, have it on the table, and we will be taking action as the drawings roll out. I mean, access has been a big thing, it's been brought up at every meeting.
Right, right, well, thank you. I know you had said that, but just to further emphasize and clarify, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you for that question, and thank you for that answer. That's a very important issue and component of this project, so we certainly appreciate that. While you're here, Mr. Bradley, I know, can you just walk us through briefly, since we don't have a document to look at, or a plan to look at, the current footprint of the lockers? Is it roughly 4,000 square feet, the locker area today? Can you just give us a quick, a quick rundown on how big the locker area is and will be, and how many lockers are going to be in there? Just briefly refresh us on that, if you know those answers.
Well, the problem we have with square footage and discussing it is with the decks or without the decks. I think you're closer to 8,000 square feet without the decks, but the fact is that the intent of the work that was done on Friday and Monday, in checking the numbers and checking the scope of work, is to bring the locker wing back pretty much the way it was.
The same size.
Same size, same number of lockers.
Okay.
We have some questionary wording in the report, only because we need to give the architect some latitude about the numbers and size of lockers. Again, access, flow, and the fact this building is going to be slightly different than what's there now as far as the roof line. I need to, as the committee, we need to give the architect, engineer architect, some latitude. We feel that that addition could be more efficient, including the access issues.
Exactly, thank you for that. Now, the lockers themselves, are we building lockers the same size, or today's lockers, do today's lockers need to be the same size? Do they need to be smaller? Do they need to be bigger? Is there any opportunity that if they are made smaller, you can get more of them and drive more revenue? Are there any issues there that we should know about from a locker perspective?
Jerry Lombardo, Director of Parks and Recreation, good evening. From the locker perspective, we wouldn't go any bigger, okay? I don't know if you recall, the old locker, they were smaller.
The older ones?
The old cabana-type lockers we had, were smaller than what we put in the new facility, did it to, for easy access in and out of the locker, and they were big enough to change, store the umbrellas, playpens, whatever the families stored in there.
Right.
We are discussing that, that's one thing that Jim has asked me, and I think as we get into development, we're going to, you know, there may be some slight changes, modifying them by a foot if we need to, either way. I don't know whether, to answer your question, I don't know, and that would be an architectural, whether we'll have more lockers.
Okay.
But when you get, as you mentioned, when you get into the design development, and where we place things such as showers, lockers, and all that kind of things, because we're still going to have a bathroom facility on the outside of the building as we, if you go there today, there's a bathroom on that side, outside. So, those things, we're going to take another look at, to see whether there might be a more efficient and less expensive way of doing things.
Right, so just to clarify, the old, old lockers were smaller, the cabana-style ones than the ones that we currently have and built six or seven years ago. Those are larger, they hold more stuff, et cetera, right? So, what are other beach communities doing, if you have any data on that, as far as like other towns that are building public facilities? Are lockers as important as they used to be? And if towns are building lockers, are they building them bigger, smaller, different? Is there anything that we can learn from other towns to either become more efficient or to maybe drive more revenue from the number of lockers available?
I'm not aware of any other towns with a facility such as ours.
Okay.
From municipality. I think the closest, I think that my colleagues do over in Westport, I think they're retrofitting their locker area, but I, I suppose they've never really been in it. But the first go-around, we tried doing it as inexpensively as we could, and I think that we've been efficiently, and I think that that's what we're going to be doing this go-around.
Okay, so we, we don't yet know, but there's a possibility that there could be some efficiencies there to be gained.
Right.
And you're going to look at them, but we're certainly not going bigger or less?
Correct, we're going to have, we have 203 lockers there presently.
Okay.
Three of which are handicapped accessibility.
Okay.
And those are bigger, and that's second.
Right, exactly.
And the, then we have the other lockers. So, we're going to look at the whole picture, since we're going to be starting from scratch, provided it, you know, goes through the process, and one area, you asked about income, we had raised the rates when we first went into the new facility, from what the old rates were, because obviously, it was a new, cleaner, more efficient operations. We are also going to be looking at that, the commission, and I'll be recommending something to the commission prior to us opening this facility. So, we based our number on 38,000 because that's what our rates are now, and I, obviously, we didn't, the first go-around, we weren't planning on having lockers. But now, moving forward, and seven A, when we start, we will be looking at our rate structure to see how it can, where it should go comparative, and what we think we can sell them for.
Okay.
And that would also, you know, raise our revenues. To what extent, right now, I don't have an idea.
Okay, one last locker question.
Go right ahead.
Can you please walk us through the general process for getting a locker? There'll be lottery process or whatever you call it, and can you also quickly walk us through how the lockers are assigned, residents versus non?
Well, I'll take the latter first. The non-residents, we give out, I believe it's 20 lockers, 10%.
10%?
Right.
Okay.
It used to be, first come, first served, we never had a quota, but then again, we had 400-something lockers back then. The second one is, we do it by lottery. It used to be that if you had a locker, you kept it until you gave it up.
Okay.
By request of the RTM, several years ago, and I believe the board of Selectman at that time, you know, said, you know, revamp the way you do it. So, I believe my staff, we do it, I'll say, in March. People either send their applications in, or they come in person, nine o'clock in the morning, we draw out of the hat, and the first 200. So, we have people watching us, it's above board, and there's, you know, there's some people that are upset, you know, that had it for many years, but that's how we do the lottery.
That's how it works.
It's a true lottery.
And you flip it every year?
Every year.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
And it's been working.
It's been working.
Yeah, I mean, it was a change, and anytime we make a change, people are concerned, but they've come accustomed to it, and they understand the process, and they understand, hey, I may or may not get a locker. But we at least get new people in every year, rather than the same 200 people using the facility and it being their facility. We get, you know, change maybe 10, 20%.
Okay, well, good, well, thank you for answering those questions.
Any further comments from board?
Okay, we'll go to the public.
I have a quick poll of Jerry, and that is that, no, no, not to you, but as far as different facilities, they're very much driven by program, by the needs of the community or the club or the association, neighborhood association, whatever it is, and the habits that people have in going to the beach. The habit of storing everything is on a slow decline, the habit of having some kind of a day locker is really what's happening, but one of the things to do, we could do and should do, is talk to the architect of the original project, which we already have, and he's already made some suggestions about more restrooms. He thinks that the peak load during the summer on weekends is too much, so he would encourage the restrooms to be added back in, as we would with option seven A, but make them, take them out of the center and get them off so that the public can use them, even though you're not using the lockers. In other words, take them out of the center. The other thing you could do is, you could interview the people that have been using the lockers, a sampling, or more than a sampling, call them all, and find out exactly, is the locker too big, too small, convenient, and so forth. So, there's an opportunity here to look at the program as far as this particular wing is concerned.
Good, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Just coming with this resolution is a bond resolution, just want to confirm that everybody's had a chance to look at that also.
Yep.
Next up would be public comment. This, as we described last time, this is public comment as opposed to public questioning, but is there anybody, how many folks, all right? Mr. Reber, if you'd like to come up and... And again, caution is, just a few minutes of comment if you would, to clarify any concerns, issues.
I know you'll, you'll make it clear if I go too long.
I will do my best, as nice as I can.
I'll be briefly, you're very nice, I'll be briefer than last time. I do need, Jan Reber, Beaumont Street, I also need to speak on behalf of Jill Kelly, who's not here tonight, and asked me to make some comments, so give me an extra minute for Jill.
That's reasonable.
Thanks. I'd like to start off by thanking Bob Mayer, I think you've really updated the financial data, it's been very helpful for us. You've gone through FEMA, we have a much better understanding than we did last week, and I really appreciate that. You've gone out of your way for us and the public on that, thanks. I have a question. What financial information do Fairfielders have a right to see in a timely manner? We're looking at a project with a town-funded cost up to $6 million, an increase of around 50%... 50 percent over the previously presented option seven. We didn't see any of that until last night. The public hasn't seen it at all. There weren't even enough copies to hand out of the documentation Mr. Mayer did last night. So you're going into this, you're gonna vote on a bond, the public knows nothing about. I still haven't seen the bonding resolution. That wasn't on the website today. So this is all being done by you without public input. I don't think that's fair. As you sit here today, about to make a decision about an enormous debt for the town, with only a handful of citizens being aware of the details of what you're doing, it seems to me you have a responsibility to make decisions not only on our behalf, but to do it in a way in which you exert some confidence that we think you're doing the right thing. We can't do that if we haven't seen any of the data. Bonds are paid off over many years. It's quite possible that the children of some of the people sitting in this room will have to pay for the banquet hall on the beach. It's only fair they get a chance to look at the numbers, have a public debate, and get input back to you about what this is all about. There are nagging issues about these numbers. My biggest concern is the $1.75 million insurance proceeds. They're being treated here as though that's free money. If I have a car loan, I demolish my car, I've gotta pay for the car that's demolished before I can buy a new car. You're not doing that. You're just assuming, hey, this is 1.75 million, we'll apply it to the new project. You can do that, but that's a cost. You could be using that money to pay off the old loan. Jill Kelly asked me to raise the issue of dropping option nine from Mr. Mayer's paperwork. Many people in the public, hundreds in fact, favor option nine. We think before you and the Board of Finance, you should always be at least looking, even though you're not voting on option nine, at least looking at the cost comparison. Next, is the banquet hall and lockers for 200 people an urgent spending priority for the town? Fairfield has a debt of $230 million, annual debt service of $26 million, even at today's low interest rates. That's over 9 percent of our town budget. Those numbers dwarf the budget debt ratios of many towns. It's many times higher than Westport's, almost 10 times higher. It's a third higher than Greenwich, three times higher than Trumbull's, twice West Hartford's. How do these towns manage to operate at lower levels of debt? As far as I know, none of them have a large banquet hall operated by the town. We really need to work through all these issues as the public, so when you make a bonding resolution and vote on it, we can understand why you're doing it. We may not agree, but at least we'll understand. Tonight, we don't. Nobody's seen these numbers. One thing that really impresses me about these Board of Selectmen meetings is the pledge of allegiance. It links us back to the founding of our nation. If Ben Franklin, one of our founding fathers, was here tonight, I think he'd take off his spectacles, look all of you in the eye, and quote from his almanac, haste makes waste. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, gets back to the board. Wow, I do feel compelled to make a couple of comments based on that to help clarify, at least from my perspective, what this board has done. This proposal has been to the Board of Selectmen, to the Board of Finance, to the Penfield Building Committee, and then back with a revised proposal on one option, back here to the Board of Selectmen. And that is, in fairly short order, four or five public sessions with plenty of time for public comment on both the proposals as well as the financing options. In terms of the amount of debt that our town has, in both talking to the rating agencies and looking at the ratios, Fairfield has one of the lowest debt per capita ratios, debt service per person or total debt per person in the towns surrounding Fairfield. So I take issue with some of the information provided there. And again, I think has been clear, both from the Board of Finance meeting and in the discussions here, this is all about what the revenue stream is, or one of the key components is. We have $4 million worth of debt left over from the rebuild in 2011. If we do nothing, that is one of the most expensive options we can have, because that leaves no revenue stream to fund the payment of that $4 million, and that will raise taxes. The proposal in front of us, and specifically option eight, but also option seven, as you can see from the analysis here, create a revenue stream. That revenue stream pays for the cost of this rebuild and also makes contributions towards the $4 million. Both, as counterintuitive as it sounds, both are, have a lower impact on our taxes than doing nothing. And each of the options that were included by the building committee and were evaluated as part of our financial analysis in the last presentation to the Board of Selectmen and in the most recent presentation of the Board of Finance, all are more expensive than the options we're looking at here in terms of the total cost impact, total cost to the town, not only rebuilding or repairing the facility, but also including the revenue streams over the next 20 years. And that's what's documented in the handouts in front of us. We will certainly get those on the website so that everybody has time to review those. Mr. Mayer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. First Lady. Yeah, just one, one brief clarification comment. The last speaker is correct. Cost of capital is very, very important, and that number was not included in the first round, but as I just pointed out to Jan, and want to remind you, it is page, in page, on page four, it is taken into consideration in the analysis that you're currently looking at.
Yes, you did cover that in the presentation.
Yeah.
That was my other, one of my other points here, just to correct for everybody so they're clear that this financial view, and again, has been as comprehensive as anything this town has ever done in terms of looking at projects, so I want to thank you for that. Any further commentary, comments, or questions from the board? Are we ready to vote?
I will just comment briefly. I won't repeat what I said the last time when I voted. And I plan to vote in support of this in, simply because the revenue stream will support this addition, and the same comments that I made last time hold again today, so I won't repeat myself.
Thank you. Mr. Colley, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just, just briefly. And I won't repeat my comments from last meeting either in support of the project seven, because it, you know, the protection of the asset and rebuilding the pavilion for all the citizens. And what I'm seeing here today is really option seven with two extra things. It's putting the lockers back in, and the additional information about the lockers, which is the financial analysis that's crisper, clearer, at least to me, that shows that the net effect of the lockers going back in is, is not what it appeared to be at one point in time. So that's different information. It's new information. It's updated and is more accurate. So my support remains. It's, you know, it was seven without lockers previously, but now with this information, it's seven with the lockers, inclusive of the new information, and my support for the project remains.
All right, thank you. When we took our vote last time, I took that with a one kind of qualifying comment that I wish we had more time to evaluate, option 1B, which at that time was fairly new. The option before us, option 7A, is really option 1B with some updated and more thorough cost information to make sure that we're clear on what that is. So this has given me an option, the opportunity to go back and look at that. When I look at what's before us, you know, we talk about risk. One piece is flood risk. Obviously, Storm Sandy has put that first and foremost on our minds. And by protecting the facility and adding protection for the neighborhood, overall, there's much lower flood risk to this project than we've had in the past and versus several of the other options. We have a lower financial risk. And when I talk about that financial risk, I'm talking about both the risk of not getting included for the maximum FEMA amount, but also, over time, making sure that the impact on our taxpayers is as little as possible. And when we're looking at this over 20 years, it's a net positive to the town, not a net negative. So that's huge from a standpoint of repaying, paying for this modification, but also paying for the $4 million that is part of the remaining costs, part of the remaining bonding from the first rebuild back in 2011. This approach seeks to maximize or lower, maximize the FEMA reimbursement, but lower the risk of getting that reimbursement by making sure that we work to the same footprint, work to the same functionality, and meet the guidelines. And it also protects the revenue stream, the revenue stream that the first rebuild was predicated on, the revenue stream that was meant to repay the cost of the first rebuild, and we'll have a chance to do that. Away from the financial risk, it also restores the amenities and the functionality. And as both my colleagues have noted, this is especially important to our seniors and to the disabled. When you look at our beach area, that, those two segments of our population, in order to share in the beach area and share in the experience and benefit from living in a coastal town, need access. And this facility provides access to the beach and the ability to enjoy it, most importantly in the, some shaded comfort while on the deck and not having to be out on the sun. I keep coming back to the revenue stream that is important to pay off the $4 million in debt, and that's why doing nothing is really not an option. This is the, what's before us is the lowest-cost solution. This has a lower impact on our tax rate than any other solution or option that's been before us, including doing nothing. And this provides the amenities and protects our taxpayers better than any of the other options before us. So it will have my support when we go forward. We ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will now go back to the regularly scheduled sequence of our agenda. Mr. Mayer, good luck at the subcommittee meetings. All right, we trust we got you out of here in time to get there. Next up is an update report from the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee. See if you'll just...
Good evening. Mark Donald, Chair of the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee.
And Mr. Donald, thank you for joining us again here to give us an update.
My pleasure. And I hope it wasn't a setup that I'm following, the Penfield Committee. So since, since the last presentation, we have begun getting the bids on phase one, which is the replacement of the roof. We're in the process of a scope review, and hopefully we'll award that within the next couple of weeks. Currently with the bids, we are conservatively estimating approximately about $300,000 in savings, and that's based on extra, extra conservative bid and the second lowest bid. There are some, you know, some things going back and forth between the construction manager and the town in order to ensure that the lowest bid is approximately $500,000.
Okay, since we don't have something in front of us, could you relate those savings to some other numbers so we know?
So, okay, I apologize. The, or the initial budget, which is the same, the roof was, the roof portion, which is phase one, was $2,800,000. And the bids coming in, which I'll speak to the ed specs here in a few minutes, is approximately around, the lowest bid's around $2,300,000. Again, going through the scope review and going back and forth with the bidder, the vendor.
As we've talked, just to be clear, is that fully loaded with overhead and everything else?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're hopeful of, you know, bare minimum, worst-case scenario, $300,000 in savings on that portion. So that portion of the bid would be approximately, you know, worst-case scenario, we're looking at around $2,400,000. The, as I mentioned about the Board of Ed, we approached the Board of Ed last week on the 12th and asked them to make an ed spec change to allow us to use a, what's called a TPO membrane. I forget what the acronym, perhaps Sal can help us out with that, but it's a single ply membrane. And we, still, everything is made, as opposed to a multi-ply, and everything stays the same in regards to warranty. This is also, you know, much more cost-effective in terms of the project and cannot, is also, we anticipate, you know, no worse for the wear along with the solar panel bids that are gonna be offered the extra protection on top of it. The solar panels, obviously, separate from this project. Based on the awarding of the bid and the finalizing of the bid, the construction schedule should be complete by the end of the summer 2015. Phase two initially, we, which is the additions and alterations, this is the science classrooms and the four additional general education classrooms, and the cafeteria expansion. The bids were initially due tomorrow. There've been a lot of requests for information from vendors and also some, as a result, some changes in the drawings. So we moved the bid date back to December 4th. We hope to complete the scope review and the preliminary awards by December 22nd. And the construction schedule with some initial action done during the Christmas break when the students are not in session in regards to temporary egress and beginning of the demolition of the Webster Wing. We don't anticipate any, any additional changes after the bid is done or any additional costs in regards to the current estimate that's out there. And that estimate is $5,400,000. Okay. Phase three, which is still going back and forth in regards to, we have a PC date, I believe on just December 2nd, in which we go back to the OSF. We're hoping for EPA approval in mid-December. If all the things hold, we will go out to bid in January, hopefully complete the scope review and award the bids in February 2015. The construction schedule is, has always been a two-summer job pending funding. And we, additionally, we went to the Board of Education last week and asked them for an ed spec change so that in order to stay faithful to the timeline, to get students in the classrooms in August, to, the specific wording of that was changed from a, the funding limit to replacement of the windows with energy-efficient units to the extent allowed by funding approved in March. So by making that change, the town is allowed to award contracts to begin the roof and the additions and alterations on phase one and two, and continue the progress with the EPA and OSF in regards to the windows.
What is the cost of the windows?
Currently, the, we have the windows budgeted. The original budget is, that's 2.7 million, I believe, 2.0, yeah, 2.675.
Okay. All right, when, when I add up 2.8 plus 5.4, plus, I don't come up to the 11.6 or...
Correct.
I think we, what's the difference on that?
So with the current numbers, we have, if, assuming the phases, phases one and two stay consistent with the, with the award and the savings, then we will be at around 10.9, all costs included.
Okay, if I add up 2.8 and 5.4, I don't get to 10.9?
Well, that would, that would include the, the soft costs, the contingencies, the CM fees.
Okay, I'm sorry, when I was asking if those were... Okay, I'm sorry, when I was asking if those were, that was all in originally, I was, I was looking for the soft costs and contingencies included, so.
Oh, my apologies.
Nope, that's, that's fine, we caught it here. So, right now, for Phases One and Two, based on the savings and the most recent bid estimates, we're up to 10.9.
Correct.
And the initial approval for the entire project was 11.6.
Correct.
Okay, so that's about $700,000 that, if all goes well, might be available to then start the windows project.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, I jumped in, I just wanted clarification.
No, I'm just.
The last time we met, there was a spreadsheet that we were given that went right to left that had, I think, four or five different dates, you know, about during the original appropriation, and I think there, it went from December to March to that one right there.
You were provided with the.
Yeah.
Okay.
So where are the variances between that and where we are, the most recent version of that and today's version of that?
Okay, today's version is consistent with the last version you saw, because we haven't made any changes until we complete the scope review.
Okay.
So we haven't added the roof savings into the budget until we complete, you know, the bid award.
So to Mr. Kyler's point, the last number we saw at the bottom of that was about 14.2 million.
14.79, I believe, was the last one.
So I'm having a hard time getting back to this number.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so the.
Well, 10.9 here is only for two phases, not three.
Right, that's for two phases, and that's also with the roof savings.
That's with it, okay.
Yes, sir.
Kristen, did you have a question?
10.9? No, not yet.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so potentially, the, the plan moving forward, assuming the Phase Two addition, alteration package comes in within the estimate range, we plan on, you know, awarding, or excuse me, issuing the bid with an alternate with, to do with funding in hand for, during the first summer, with alternates to potentially do, with additional funding for, excuse me, summer of 2015, and, and then an alternate for summer of 2016. So the plan would be to approach the town boards in February or March for more funding.
Okay, if I ask a question? The, one of the pieces of information, and thank you, you mentioned that the roof in the bid, one of the things we did in order to get a lower price on the roof was to change the spec to make it a single-layer roof. If, what's the difference between a double-layer roof and a single-layer roof, and if this is equally as good, why didn't we just spec the single-layer roof right from the start? And if, Mr. Morbeto's here, perhaps if you can clarify, are we using a single-layer or double-layer roof on Ward, on Mill Hill, and the other roof projects we've done most recently?
Sal Morbeto, Managing Construction for Board of Education. The difference with Ludlow is something that's coming up later in the agenda tonight, which is what Mr. Bowman's going to be bringing up, is the PPA first agreement for Ludlow High School. We're going to add solar panels on the roof. That created an opportunity on this roof in that typically we go for a multi-ply roof. Has durability, it's self-healing, there's a lot of pluses to it.
We have had some roof issues over the years.
Correct, correct. So that's our standard. The opportunity that's, came about here is with the solar panels and the amount of roof area that they're going to cover, quite substantial, on 70 to, 75 to 80 percent of the roof will be covered by solar cells, which in and of themselves help protect the roof. They still get wet, the roof still gets wet, but it's, it has less of the impact of the And on top of that, when they put in these ballasted systems, it's actually a rack that's placed on the roof, weighted down, and they melt the solar panels on those, in between the roofing system that we install, or the building committee will install, they'll put what's called a slip sheet. So we actually have a second layer to protect the roof further. So it was an opportunity to get some economies, put what's called a cool roof on. It's reflective, which is what you want for the solar cells. It's a light color, keeps the roof cooler, the solar cells output degrade with heat. So if you had a darker roof, it actually works against getting the best benefit from the solar cells. So it was all the opportunity, it's not our, our standard. It does carry the 20-year warranty, just like our multi-ply roofs. Ward, we got a benefit from that system, we got a 25-year warranty, but that's not what our ed spec asks for, and that's not what's required by OSF for reimbursement. The standard on that, or the hurdle on that, is a 20-year warranty.
So the 25 is better than the requirement?
It was, yeah, it was a benefit of the manufacturer that came in on that particular project.
And with this roof, what's the warranty?
20 years.
Okay, so that hits the minimum we need for that.
That hits the requirement that we need by our ed spec and also by OSF requirements.
Is there any cost to the town for the solar panels and the roofing and such that are being added?
The, I'll let Mr. Bowman speak to the PPA, but the cost for that installation is borne by, as part of that PPA. They own the whole system, they run the system, they maintain the system. They're using our real estate to do that, and as a benefit, we get a lower electric rate, but I'm jumping way ahead on the agenda.
Yeah, and I, and I don't mean to take it all the way there, but you indulge into the board. Mr. Bowman, would you be able to just clarify if there's any cost, I'm not asking for you to do your presentation?
No, there's no cost whatsoever.
Okay, so there's no cost to the town for adding the solar panels? Because my, my concern, obviously, was, we're removing costs out of the building project and then having to, you know, rebook that someplace else, so on one hand, saving money here, but having to pay it out elsewhere. There's no cost on the panels? That sounds like, that actually seems like a great.
It's a win-win.
Example of teamwork between the town and the Board of Ed and the building committee in terms of putting all that together to optimize their capability and expenses and save the town and taxpayers' money over time. So, Chris.
Just a follow-up. I'm happy to jump on that, because as you gentlemen both know, I've been excited to think about the possibility of this, and now to see it becoming a reality is really wonderful. The question I have is about structural integrity of the roof, which I know is one of the requirements, I think, with the contract, so is there any, there's no added cost in terms of assuring that the, the load can be handled?
They're lightweight, the panels themselves are lightweight. They did survey the building beforehand, but that, if something has to be put in, I believe it's borne by them to, to do all the mountings and things like that, so that's within the cost. They have to develop the system for them to get the necessary tax breaks and all that, make the whole people out of work.
We asked the engineer or designer.
Well, Mr. Bowman, if you could, from the, well.
I said.
I just want to be cautious about getting too much into presentation, we're going to have Mr. Bowman up there later, but to continue on.
This wasn't going to be part of my presentation, anyway. Anyway, we asked the engineer on all these roofs, that would interfere with the warranty, the 20-year warranty at all, and if they say yes, then we're not doing it, so. In any case, we've done it, they've always had that certification from the engineer who designed the roof, the manufacturer, would not interfere with it, so.
My question is more, my understanding from reading the contracts, and I'm not there yet on the agenda either, but was that we were required to be certain, again, I use my home as an example, when we did solar panels, we actually had to do some added structural and anticipation of the panels being placed on our home. My understanding from reading the contracts is the same is true, that we, as the host, would be required to make sure that the structural.
That's true, that's why we wouldn't put them anywhere.
So you're saying that, your answer is an answer yes, so the warranty is not, is also.
Required more money for the roof, then we're not doing it.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Bowman, for clarifying that.
Okay, is it okay if I do a follow-up on that? Given that's the case, that all things go okay, there's no cost, extra costs, we're not moving money around, but if we don't go forward with the solar plant, because they won't warranty it at some point, so that project stops, what are we left with, is a single-ply roof, and what's Plan B in that case?
To answer the question about the war, if we can't maintain our warranty?
Mr. Bowman just described the situation, where the company doing the installation on the solar panels, if I understood him correctly, is going to evaluate the roof, and assuming they can do this without damaging our warranty, we will let them go forward.
Right.
If they determine they cannot do that and meet that criteria, and we do not go forward, where does that leave the Ludlow roof with one single-ply roof?
The, the way that a solar system gets placed on a roof, doesn't matter if it's brand-new or five years old, the installing contractor, who's actually installing it on, on the roof membrane that we own, that's in place, has to go to the manufacturer. In this case, I believe it's Firestone, and they go to their engineering solutions department. And they come out and they survey it, and they come up with the solution that will not void their warranty. On a flat roof, that is what I was, for all the installations that we've been involved in, which is just three small demonstration projects at our middle schools, what that is, is what's called a slip sheet, is added another thickness of roofing for a ballasted system. So what we have is no different than what we've, we've installed previously. So they'll work with the manufacturer to make sure the warranty's not voided by their installation. There are less reputable solar installation companies that might shortcut that, particularly in the residential market, so that you might end up with a roof failure caused by their installation. On a commercial application, you have to go to the manufacturer. We will not let them install without doing that, and we've had that conversation, or at least I've had that conversation with Green Skies, about following that protocol. So, shouldn't happen, so the Plan B, you're asking, will we go back to the multi-ply roof? I don't see that happening, assuming the PPA is established tonight, we'll get the Green Skies in with the manufacturer as soon as possible for their solution, to make sure that the building committee has that information for their December, well, 19th meeting?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth meeting. So it's a, it's a relatively simple process.
Yeah, I'm not having any trouble following the process.
Yeah.
I'm not having any trouble following the, and again, I appreciate the teamwork and coming together. My question is simply, if they don't go forward, which is what Mr. Bowman said is one of the possibilities, what's Plan B?
Plan B is, per the, per the ed spec, the TPO is still allowed. We reduce the ed spec based on the assumption that the PPA is going through.
Okay, and that's, that's reasonable, I just, again, what's Plan B? You said you reduce the multi-layer to one layer based on the fact that panels would be in charge. If the panels can't go through, what's Plan B? Because, and specifically, my concern.
We'll have to discuss it at the building.
Is that we're spending all the money.
Spending all the money.
Well, here's the dominoes. We got the roof bid down because it's only one layer. We do the roof, we do the classrooms, we start the windows because we have money left over, then we don't get this approved. Where do we stop in all of this? What's the?
The roof that would be installed, if it was, the TPO was selected and was put in, and you never put in a PPA, we have a roof that has a 20-year warranty. And we would maintain that roof for the life of the roof and make sure that we got the maximum life out of that. The cost, you know, with our proactive roof maintenance program, we get, we're extending the life of roofs well past the warranty standpoint, whether they were our 10-year warranty roofs, 15 years, and most of our newer roofs are 20 years. So we've seen a long lifespan on that. Could it be longer if you spent more and had a multi-ply roof? Yeah, and doing the analysis on it? I don't have that analysis for you.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm happy to, to understand that the single-ply roof is just as good as a double-ply roof, multi-ply roof, I think is the term we use. That leaves me the question of, we're saving almost 30 percent by going with a single-ply. You just described a series of maintenance and other things, which we know to be successful, that you've proven that over time. Why do we spend 30 percent more on multi-ply roofs if a single-ply roof can be just as effective, last 20 years, and with our maintenance program, make it last longer?
Multi-ply roof is more durable. It will last longer, and for, proportionally for the dollar, you get a longer lifespan.
We're spending 30 percent more to get a five-year increase?
No, not a five-year increase. For instance, a 25-year warranty at Ward, if the maintenance program is kept up, you definitely would see that much higher than five years more. You'd be looking at 35 years before you start talking about replacement. Multi-ply roofs are more acceptable to, if you remember, a few years ago, we did restorations on roofs, they're more adaptable to a restoration, which is a low-cost extension on top of a very long life. So there's benefits for having the multi-ply roof.
Mr. Morbeto, I'm happy to believe either argument.
Right.
But now you just convinced me that having a single-ply roof then isn't that good, and if we don't have the panels, we need to go back to a double-ply.
If I may.
Sure.
So I, I just heard Mr. Morbeto say he doesn't have the specific analysis, but that essentially he is taking it on good faith that it's very likely, given the history that we as town bodies have had in terms of passing these power purchase agreements through, that we will move forward with this, but he's not certain. And it was the, that was the decision that was made to go forward with the single-ply roof. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Morbeto, that, yes, in general, you, without solar panels, you prefer the double-ply because you feel like you can get, it's your experience that you can get a longer, potentially a longer life out of the roof, but in this case, if it's a single-ply roof, if for some reason the solar doesn't go through, you'll have the 20 years, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Tetra, you, you're saying, you know, what's the Plan B? And I think.
We, we didn't proceed on the basis that the PPA was not passing.
Right, so you.
So if, if so happens tonight the PPA doesn't pass, then we'll have something to discuss at the next building committee meeting on the decision measure. It was, it was based on the fact that, or the assumption that the PPA was going.
It's not a function of the PPA passing, it's a function of the vendor agreeing to put it on the roof and meeting a criteria there. That's the concern, that's a little further down.
They know that was 30 days, though.
Okay.
It's a quick turn around.
Question, the ed spec that they modified at the Board of Education, was that contingent upon the PPA being in place and being a part of the project?
No.
Or are they now saying that single-ply roofs are okay?
They, they modified, they modified it on that information, but it was not contingent, the wording's not contingent upon.
Okay.
The, the PPA.
Okay.
Do we have the modified ed spec?
Tom, do you have that? Or Mark?
Have enough copies for the board?
I do not have enough copies now, but I can provide, I just have a single copy.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
About the roof item or just in general?
Well, we'd like to stick to the agenda.
No, well, in general about, in general about the high school project is what I meant, so I will.
Yes, please. It's all one big project, so you can comment on any aspect of it you like.
Great, thank you. So I guess the, the struggle here, and this isn't for you specifically, Mr. Morbeto, is we want, I would like to see, by the way, I'll just preface any remarks with what I said the last time about this, is it's imperative that this project continues to move forward through the process. We, I think as a community, are counting on the fact that the roof, which we know has had issues at this school, is addressed, and that we are able to move forward with these. these science classrooms and the expansion in order to be able to provide the instructional space that our students need and that our teachers need to teach. And we know that the windows, we've known, we've been talking about them for a number of years. I think that, you know, the caution is just this, the ongoing communication is going to be so important with the changing of the numbers and the ed-specs having changed. And I guess I just would urge you to have as close communication as possible with the First Leckman's office and the finance department going through, because I don't want to see this project not moving forward in the way that it should because of any glitches in that. I appreciate you coming before us. Thank you, Ms. Holmes.
Thanks, Trey.
Today to address this. And I guess I will comment specifically about the roof. I think what that decision was on the part of the Board of Ed without having been there the night that that vote was taken was effectively a compromise, recognizing that we have an opportunity here with the solar panels, that it wouldn't be their first choice. Clearly, it wasn't, given what the initial ed-specs had, but that now, given all the situations at hand, that that would be an acceptable option going forward. So I am grateful that you're here and just kind of cautious. I hope that you'll keep all of us up to date.
Yeah, I don't think anybody here disagrees with the importance. I think the two issues, at least in my mind, are, one, that we do have an alternative plan in case the panels don't work, so that we adjust that promptly. Because what we're doing is we're up against the 10.9. So we've got two critical components here. One is maintaining a $600,000 savings, so we have some breathing room, because we're 10.9 plus 600,000 or plus 500,000 is 11.4 versus an overall project approval authorization of 11.6. That's only $200,000 difference. And we're talking about potentially proceeding with a windows project that's close to $3 million, 2.7, I think, is the current estimate. Obviously not up the bid, obviously without an approved mitigation plan. So that number is subject to change, hopefully down, but subject to change. So the, so my question then is, when is the plan to start the windows? Do we get the roof and the classrooms done so we make sure we don't threaten any of the funding authorizations for those and then start the windows so we know how much savings we actually have? What's the current project plan to do? I think Mr. Kylie asked for that earlier.
Yes.
The current plan slash hope, because we're up against waiting for EPA decision on the abatement. Assumption, if we get that by mid-December, the windows would be bid by the end of December, would be out on the road and return late in February, late in January, so that the bids could be evaluated, say, early February, so that the three components of the job, the roof, the additions, and the windows, you'd have real numbers on it. As Mr. Donald said, seek funding at that point, once they have perfect knowledge, the building committee has perfect knowledge of real costs. The bid would be constructed in such a way that it would not violate the funding already approved. It would be a base bid with some alternates, so that if they want to proceed with an abbreviated project for, or abbreviated phase for Phase 3, it can be done on the initial funding so that you can have work done in the summer while you still have a CM encumbered and architect encumbered and owners rep encumbered within the budget numbers. If you delay it another year, that's an additional cost. If you don't do it while you have the people here, it's an additional cost to, say, jump it one more year. So it'll be a fluid timeline to try to get that. Now, if the EPA approval comes in January 15, it's a whole nother game, because by the time you're ending up bidding this, you might not have enough time to have the manufacturer produce the windows in time for summer 2015 more.
Yes, it just, my concern is that I don't have any trouble starting Phase 1 and Phase 2 in order to meet the classroom requirement, get folks in and all kind of stuff. That makes sense, we have enough money to do that, assuming nothing blows up, which has happened from time to time recently on projects. We have concerns about Osborne Hill that we heard earlier, we had the Ridgefield or Riverfield experience earlier this year on that. So my concern is getting started with all three phases without enough money approved to complete all three phases. Now, if the project plan is to go out for the additional funding before starting the roof, the windows part, that makes sense, because that's the security that you need to make sure you have full funding. So what you're saying is, you know, it's very likely we'll still end up in the 13.5 to 14-million range. My concern is that the numbers have moved so substantially. We've gone from, you know, 11.6 to 14 to 15, back down to 14, and we're still kind of at that $14-million number to do the whole project. Getting it started on the first two phases makes sense, because that fits within our 11.6, and that is reasonable, though it only was, you know, right now is beating it by about 600,000, 5 to 600,000. And given how much the numbers have moved, creates some concern. We'll have a better handle when we get the other bids back. Obviously, there's some concern with that, because we had some clarifications to make on those, and that bumped the date from tomorrow?
20th.
To December 4th. December 4th. The goal was to get the shovel in the ground in December. We're going to make that by a few days, based on your current estimate here. So I know there's no reason and no really room to delay on that piece. But I am very concerned about when we start the windows, how much funding we have and how much certification, confirmation that we have, that the estimates, including the bids, work for the other two phases. Because as we've experienced, knowing when these blow up, they blow up during the construction. We've been bouncing out a lot before we start, which I'm going to credit to the fact that we've been taking long, hard looks at these and working very hard to kind of control these numbers on that side. But my concern, and to echo Ms. McCarthy-Vehi, where I think we need to stay in close contact as these bids come back and before we start the windows, to make sure that we have full information. And then again, I would encourage you to start going through the approval process to the other boards, this board and the other boards, for additional funding, as soon as we know we're going to need that. And it sounds like you know we're going to need that, so I suggest that there's no reason to wait on that. Go ahead.
Back to the EPA, because that's the, the timing for the EPA piece is always a tricky piece for this, and it has been in other projects, too. Any news or any word or any information about that and when you're hoping to?
Like I said, we're hoping for mid-December. I spoke with the EPA reviewer last, I'd have to check my notes if it was last Wednesday or last Tuesday, is being looked on. There's emails being exchanged, information going back and forth that I'm copied on. I'm sure I'm not copied on every item. In that dialogue between the hygienist and the EPA, as they're clarifying those plans. But in my conversation, I stressed where our timeline was, not that, and, you know, I also had the statement that, you know, there's other communities that also have, that are also in line, waiting for their plans to be approved. And all I reiterated was just sharing where I am and if you can help us. There was indication, but no promise, that we can try to get it in that timeframe, so that we can get to that bid timeline that I just described by the end of December, getting to bidding. Obviously, if we don't get to bidding and get, let's say, complete information on windows and on that Phase 3, you would either be going into seeking funding based on estimates that, as you've just said, bounce or cold, hard numbers, actual bids. The decision of whether to award on a small, abbreviated third phase would have to be a discussion from the building committee, whether they want to seek going in that direction prior to seeking all of the funding or doing it concurrently. It would be out of my hands, but the game plan is to get all the numbers in place.
Yeah. And I guess, if I might-
Just to follow up with the EPA, this is still the EPA piece, which is, it sounds like there's movement in the conversation.
Oh, yeah.
We still don't know. And is there anything that can be done to help that process along? I've asked this in past projects, but-
It is a federal agency. The only people that I would think that can move a federal agency is a federal representative, a senator or congressperson. And it's, they're, they move at a, it's not a fast rate that they move on these things, but there is movement, it's not being ignored.
Okay.
Which is, which is the positive part of that. It's definitely being looked at and there's conversations and it's going back and forth. It's not daily, that's not their MO, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
Cover that and another point. One, with both Riverfield and Penfield, where we've needed help from the federal delegation, the building committees have come to me and I've been able to help do that. So I'd encourage you, if we reach the point where we need to move this forward, that's getting stuck, please let me know and we will reach out to our federal delegation and get their help on doing this. Second, and again, my concern overall is not whether we get started on the roof and the classrooms. My concern is where we stand on starting the windows without complete funding. So if you go back to the boards and get complete funding for this, at whatever level the building committee deems, that makes sense. That's one approach that addresses the issues. If we don't do that, I think it's a, we just spent better part of an hour or so before this talking about risk. To me, that creates a tremendous financial risk, because we haven't had great experience with PCBs and completing projects on cost, but through no fault of anybody's, PCBs are PCBs, they happen. All right? But we have additional constraint of, we want to make sure that we have enough money when we start the project to finish the project within a reasonably high confidence level. So I think my biggest concern would be starting the windows before we know exactly how much money we have left from the other projects. And we can talk more about that as we move forward, but I would, again, encourage, at this point, I think Mr. Kylie referenced the charts we had earlier. I think those church, first column going back started with 11.6. I think everything else on that chart has been over 14-million, showing what the projections are all the way through.
They range from 13.5 to 14.8.
All above the authorized level. Now, I know the building committee's been working very hard. Mr. Donald, I've talked a couple of times over that time period on how much they're working. It's obviously from what you're proposing here, how creative you've been in terms of solving the problem and doing everything you can to get cost down. Costs are still way over the authorized level, so part of the question becomes, okay, after nine months of kind of working your buns off to get this down to as low a number as possible and still meet the ed-spec, and then going back and being creative and modifying the ed-specs, so you take another shot at doing that, it may be time to go back and get to the other boards and say, look, we've done everything we can, here's what the costs are really shaping out today. And let's just get this on the table and have the discussion, because what you don't want to do, and what I would be frankly very adverse to doing, is starting the windows project without having these other projects finished, so we know, have hard numbers on where we're going to be.
I understand.
Because until we finish the first two, that delta we have between that and the author is just an estimate at this point. And we have run into issues with that all the way through. And certainly, if we start the windows without full funding, we have some way of having to break that off. But I guess the simplest way to say it, I'm just concerned about starting the first two makes sense, I get concerned about starting the third one without a fully-developed budget that shows where we need to be to complete it.
And I believe after the December 4th bid receipt and then the follow-up scope review, the budget would be able to be updated for the roof, the additions, which hopefully also has a nice savings to it. You can carry the estimate for Phase 3, but that's not happening until later, mid-December-ish anyway. So right now, if the building committee met tomorrow and grabbed that number, it would be the wrong number to go forward with, because you don't know the savings of the packages or the increases on the packages that are already on the street.
I wouldn't disagree with anything you said, and I trust the building committee to kind of, to kind of manage that process. I'm just, I want to go on record as stating clearly my concern about starting the windows before we have either full funding approved or we've completed Phase 1 and Phase 2, so we know exactly what the differential is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further comments?
And I'd like to second that and confirm that I would like to see that very same information at its earliest possibility. In addition to that, I would like to see, as soon as this week, that document updated with what you know this week, which is what you explained tonight, basically, just see, and I know it's only incrementally changed to reflect the savings, but I would still like to see that document updated for what it would tell me today. I would like to see that document updated sometime right after the December 4th meeting, which you'll know a little bit more at that point in time. And then if we could update that document one more time after December 15th or later in December with what you will know additionally at that point in time, because like Mr. Tetra was talking about, you know, this, we are quickly, you know, running into a situation where we're going to have two projects that are ongoing and another one that wants to get going, and we know we're significantly underfunded for the third one. So by knowing everything that happens along the way over the next four to six weeks, it will allow us to be better informed and it will allow us to make better decisions and be more helpful to complete the project. So I would like to make those, make those requests and also make them in Excel format versus PDF, so I can, you know, play with the numbers a little bit in a spreadsheet form. So I, if it makes sense, I know there's changes for tonight, there's changes after December 4th, we expect changes after December 15th, right? Later in December, based on what I heard.
Well, what typically happens is, as the roof bid came in last week and it's, the contractor is still vetting out that number, what could be placed in there is the apparent low bid. It could be the apparent second low bid to be conservative, which is what Mr. Donald was talking about with that 300,000 saving. Just to say conservatively, even if we go down the drain with the low bid or the backup number. So there might be some questions back and forth as to where you want to be with that. And that could, the same thing could happen with after the December 4th return, if that date holds, which assuming it will.
Understood.
A few days later, do the analysis and do we grab the low, apparent low bid and publish a number that's not vetted? Or do something safe like, so really would want some guidance?
Well, I'll leave that up to you guys. You guys can come back and make the recommendations. I just want to be able to see what you're thinking, because there's going to be a lot happening in, between now and Christmas, right? And there's going to be two or three meetings and three, two or three decision points, and numbers will be updated. So rather than wait until the end and get everything at once and look at it and say, geez, I wish I had known, I would rather see it incrementally along the way, if it's not too much trouble.
We probably could do some scenarios.
Yeah, it shouldn't-
Scenarios, low bid, second low bid, Phase 1, Phase 2.
I mean, I'm not looking to create busy work, I'm just trying to understand, since we're getting crunched here, and, and we know we're short on money at the end, just kind of letting us know along the way, you know, what's going on.
Some scenario comes.
That's it.
Sure.
So the tentative timeline right now is the building committee is to have a special meeting on the 3rd of December to award the roof bid. At that point, that number would be a little more fixed than to have a special meeting on the 17th as well, to do the same thing with Phase 2. Would that be sufficient?
It would.
To provide you, so December 3rd, we approve, we get you by the end of that week, the numbers in that spreadsheet.
That's exactly what I asked for.
And then 17th, special meeting to award Phase 2, everything's vetted, et cetera, then the 19th presumably gets you those numbers.
And if you can get one for the current changes as well. I mean, even though it's minor, if you can update the one for what you told us tonight about the window savings, just so we can see the changes up and down.
The roof savings.
The roof savings, thank you.
Okay, that's what, that's what would be finalized on December 3rd, but we can't, you know, if-
Okay.
You tell me what- You tell me what, what your comfort level is.
Why don't we do this? Yeah.
Okay.
We're not going to do anything with it over Thanksgiving.
That's fine. Thank you. So just do it twice.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you very much for that.
The weekend, or by December 5 and December 18.
That's fine. And one last question. I know it's getting late, but I had a question on the windows. When you look at the ed spec and the words, you're on page three, on the replacement of the energy efficient windows, the words per recent architectural studies are, are stricken, excuse me, and to the extent allowed by funding. So just kind of like, can you just give me an example of what the difference in the quality of windows? I'm, I'm reading that to kind of say that if we're short on money, we might put a slightly different window in there?
No, no, that, that was what we're...
Please help me understand that.
That's what we were just talking about before. Because the project is projected over budget, and there's three phases. The roof needs, need to make a decision and move on the roof because of the assumed PPA approval and assumed approval of that installation. Kids are coming, the kids are coming, the kids are coming. We have to do the room and the seats and all that.
Sure, absolutely.
The only one that you can dial, how much do we do, per this wording, is how many windows do you replace? If there's 1,000 windows and you only have money for 250 of them, that's what that's saying.
So this is referring...
It's not changing the quality.
So this is referring to the number of windows, not the quality of the window replacements?
Correct.
Okay, it just wasn't clear to me what that dialing back could consist of.
Just so that we, so it could be said that there's, there's a path to matching the funding that's approved.
Got it.
The, the additional words past that and as may be amended is what we're talking about. Get to the boards, go get your money.
Right.
So as the, as it may be amended, so in the scenario, the phase three windows, say everything works out perfectly, windows were always intended to happen over two years. Summer 2015, summer 2016. The base bid could be whatever matches that remaining funding for 2015 and alternate to make up the difference for 2015 to get you up to 50% of the windows, whatever the, that math is. And then another alternate, alternate price from the vendors for the balance of the windows the following summer. That way that the process can continue and if we're surprised next week and all of a sudden the EPA letter came just before Thanksgiving, what we were saying about bidding in December, we would be bidding early December and be a month ahead of the whole thing and, and no numbers at the beginning of the new year. So I don't think that's going to happen, but...
It could.
You don't know.
Take that.
Just to follow up, what exactly is the value then of having per recent architectural studies? I guess to follow up on Mr. Conley's question, language could have been added, added, and that language could have been retained as well.
The, the recent architectural studies identified specific windows to replace. So if you said per recent architectural studies, this is the study that was done by the TFC is basically what those words were. So they, they produced a document that said, went, and it went 95%. Here's all the windows you should replace, except you should, you should go and do PCB testing. And that wasn't part of their evaluation and they had a list of windows. So it could be said if you leave those in and you didn't do the windows per that study, that, you know, you're not following the spirit. So that's, that's the reason it was struck. You also, because it's not saying Wiles Architect or the TFC study, it also could be considered the recent architectural study done by Perkins Eastman that is hired by the building committee too. So it's one of those fuzzy language lines.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, as we're going through all this, and I realize we've asked a lot of detailed questions, a lot of different stops, I do want to compliment the building committee because there's been a lot of work and rework in terms of going through this. And I know we started talking last, early last summer, and there's been a lot of creative problem solving applied to how to fit this foot in a shoe that's potentially a little bit smaller in terms of authorization. And the numbers identified that it's, you've been dealing with a project that's above the authorized level pretty much the entire life of the building committee. I'm trying to map two concerns here. One is making sure that we get the classrooms done at the best possible chance. Based on the last update, we're about a month later in terms of getting a shovel in the ground than we planned to be, which happens. I mean, it's not, I don't mean to, but we've spent a lot of time dealing with risk and it seems to me that two things come to mind. One is that we don't want, we've got in essence, three separate projects. My concern would be we'd have competing funding initiatives as we go through this. As you try and get the, as we've seen with, and Sal, I'm going to go back to Tomlinson, trying to get that done by September a million years ago.
Yeah, that was just before me, but yes, I...
Yeah, okay. I'm sure the stories were still around when you got here.
Yeah.
And I, the overtime that was needed, the schedules that needed, everything was done because things had gotten behind through that. And I'm very concerned about the classrooms because of that importance, that we want to make sure that we have the available funding and authorization to get what needs to be done on that. You know, kind of same thing with the roof. That fits within what we're doing. I am a little bit concerned about Plan B, but let's, you know, you're, we'll have an option to potentially deal with that if the panels aren't installed or don't fit. And I buy the fact that that's a lower probability than, than something that's very likely. I don't see any way to confidently start the windows until phases one and two are complete or we have additional funding. Right? Any other option other than that creates a, in my mind, a serious financial risk to either completing the classrooms, which I think is the one aspect of this, we don't want to risk. You know, what I've heard from Dr. Title on down, very consistently, never varied, was that we need those classrooms ready for the start of school year. I think that starting the windows project technically bites off more than you can chew. And because of the PCB issues and other things that we've seen explode and blow up a project in other areas, creates that opportunity to have here. And I wouldn't want to see the classroom phase at risk. I wouldn't necessarily want to see the roof phase at risk. That seems to be the simplest of the projects we've had. We have the least amount of overages just on the roof phase of doing that. So my caution would be, don't start the windows until phases one and two are complete and we've got kids in the classrooms and we know we have the money left over. Or go get the additional funding so that all three are funded at the appropriate levels and we can start them on a timely basis. I see those as the only two paths out of here. Capitalist are other options if you have a chance to think through those, and you guys have been pretty creative up to this point, so happy to entertain that any point. But right now, based on everything you've told us and based on, obviously this board is focused on financial risk in these, I think that we have to take one of those two paths. So I would ask you to please consider that.
Understood.
All right. Any further comments from the board?
No.
All right. Thank you very much for coming back.
Thank you.
All right. That finishes that report. Next up on the agenda is the Affordable Housing Committee to hear a report from the Affordable Housing Committee on the Affordable Housing Plan. I talked to the committee earlier today. We agreed to postpone that to the next meeting. May I have a motion to postpone to the, to a date certain, be the next Board of Select and meeting?
Some of...
A second? Second? All right. We'll see that come back to us on the next agenda. Next up, the Director of Public Works, item 10, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works. Resolve that an agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Green Skies for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the closed Fairfield landfill for the sole benefit of the Fairfield Water Pollution Control Facility located at 330 Richard White Way. The term of the agreement shall be, being 20 years, be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Mr. Bowman, would you take us through this, please?
Sir, there's actually five projects, so I'll just give you basically some more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You want to do it one by one? Especially on the Coles landfill site. We've chosen a contractor to go out there, Green Skies, who's the biggest contractor around and the most reliable contractor for us. They picked a site on the top of the landfill. They've reviewed it internally with engineering, with Tom Slankin, he was here. They've gone to DEP and checked out and getting permits from DEP because there are endangered species that flow through there. They've designed it around permissions from DEP to do that. They've done a full engineering design on it and they're ready to go with it. It will then support or supply 1.6 million kilowatt hours electricity to the sewer treatment plant on an annual basis, which will bring sewer treatment plant getting close to not having to rely on UI at all pretty soon. If you take a look at the town cost and the PPA cost, the town costs are different, you know, depending on the size of the plant, how it's used, how much demand is, is the cost per kilowatt hour becomes different. If the land, the treatment plant is 16.3, the tennis is 18, and the railroad station is 17, so on the schools is about 17 cents based on what they'll be paying for electricity next year. So I don't know. The tennis recreation, again, that's going to be a facility just like the one at the Rec Center, which would be in the parking lot, raised in the parking lot.
Okay. Before we go too far, is there any visual descriptive graphs, charts, anything that show?
No, not at this point. But it will be the same as the one at the Rec Center, the same one.
Okay.
May I? You were, Mr. Bowman, you were just referring to different prices. Is that what you were referring to, Mr. Tetra?
No, I think you're talking about the design.
I was looking at, just at the landfill. Before we move too far off of that, I wanted to come back and say, is there a map of how these panels would look on the ground over the landfill, how much of the landfill would be covered? And I was going to ask the same question for each of the projects, but...
Right. I don't have that at this point, no. But I, it's around somewhere, but again, it had to be finalized based on DEP's determination. Well, here's what happened. They're not, they're not, trying to put the photovoltaic anywhere where these endangered species go, and they're migratory, they're not there all year round. But they wound up proposing on areas where they feed when they're at the landfill, on that site. So they've been switching it off that site. They're also switching it so that the existing trail system there is, remains intact. So I don't have full designs of that, but it's about four, four and a half acres on the very top of the landfill. It'll only be four feet off the ground, it's not raised, so it'll be sort of, sort of like a rooftop, land ground level. So that's as close as I can give you on that one at this point.
Okay. All right. When you say at this point, is there a time when we can get more detail on that?
Sure, I mean, the next couple of weeks I'll be able to come up with full, you know, drawings.
Okay. All right. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but you were about to move off and I didn't want to put you off.
Yep.
Any further questions? Okay, to let Mr. Bowman continue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Again, the Tennis Recreation Center, the new building there would be on their parking lot, be similar to the one at the Recreation Center on Mill Plain Road, but it'd be a larger system, not a slightly larger system, anyway. So it would look just like that one looks and be tied into the building.
Mr. Bowman, I'm, just because there's five different items here, I'm just having trouble. Just, could you tell us, kind of, give us the big picture of how your presentation's going to go so we kind of, I don't want to interrupt you, but...
I'm sorry, no, the presentation was like here, is that these five projects would produce 4.7 million kilowatt hours electricity on an annual basis and save the town $285,000 a year, which means that over, that, this system alone represents 60 and a half percent of town's total electric production being green. Over 20 years, 90 million kilowatt hours electricity will be saved, $5.7 million in taxes will be saved, even if the cost for electricity we're paying now didn't go up a penny. That's a pretty good deal. Also, when you look at what we've done, we combined this, these new projects with the existing photovoltaic projects, that total produces increased to 5.9 million kilowatt hours electricity, or it would mean we'd be producing over 20 and a half percent of our power with green solar, which is something we were targeting for like five years. But if you combine that with our natural gas fire generators at the water pollution control facility, the generator at the police station, that brings it up to a green power of 31%, which is not bad. But now, we go beyond that, because in addition to producing green power, the town also purchases it. 100% of the power for Independence Hall is bought from a green, is green, another 350,000 kilowatt hours, plus 18% of all the power we bought on a bid for electricity by state law is green. Result that if all these were approved, that by the end of 2015, we would, we would either make or buy over 44% of our electricity from green sources. And continuing, we hope that another million and a half kilowatt hours of green power by 2016, which would bring the total to 50%. So if everything goes forward the way we planned it, in two years, we'll be making 50% of our power from green sources.
Okay, so that, and just to clarify, so 50% of our electricity usage for the entire town, that's town and board of it?
Town and board education, yep.
Would be from green sources?
That's correct.
Is there any other town that's up that high?
No. I don't think there was any near that high that I know of, no.
Wow. That's, that's an astounding number. That's an astounding number, especially in light of recent announcements by UI in terms of what they're trying to do with their rate increases. This is phenomenal in terms of being good stewards of the environment, but it's equally phenomenal in terms of the financial impact on the town, expenses, tax rates, and doing everything we can for our taxpayers.
I forget everybody kind of how they're going to spend money, I tell you how we're going to save money for a little change.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
How much do we spend? What I'm trying to get is how much we're saving per year? How much we spend?
It's on the first page. Savings of, dollar savings per year per project.
Right. But I'm looking at, when we get to 50%, what's the amount of money we're saving per year when we're at that?
Let me just take a look there. Well, 16 and a half percent says 285,000, roughly three times that amount. So it'd be about $850,000 a year.
Yeah, close to a million dollars a year if you assume any sort of UI rate increases over that. All right, that's a, that's a phenomenal amount that, that's a phenomenal amount. Ed, thank you, everything you're doing for both the town, the environment, and our taxpayers in doing that. And I didn't mean to jump ahead on the projects themselves.
That's okay, you get the general knowledge of the specific.
Yeah. Any questions from the board? I'll tell, you want? Go ahead.
I have, I have a bunch.
All right.
And Mr. Bowman, you know how I feel about the work that you do, and I'll repeat what I say, you're our green energy superhero.
I appreciate it.
And so I still, of course, have lots of questions.
Of course.
Even though you have been here many times before, I find that each time I learn a little bit more and I appreciate that. So just, and I know you've talked about this before, but the advantage of buying versus selling. The program, from my understanding, is designed for the leasing option, not the, the purchase. In other words, we have chosen to go the leasing or the, the power purchase agreement way because of the associated risk and the benefits.
Exactly. We could build it and own it ourselves, but, you know, we decided, town, first selection, why do we want to own something we don't understand, basically? How do we maintain it? You know, have the person who designed it build it, own it, operate it, and take 100% of the risk on it. If it fails, it costs us nothing, he has to take it off the roof, we're just going back to where we were again. I mean, that's the advantage of this. And it's a guaranteed savings for 20 years. We've set it up so that they measure for 20 years against the current cost of power so that they can never charge us more than we're paying today, no matter what happens over 20 years. So even, you know, their, their cost will increase like from 1.9 to 2% a year, but it can never increase so much that we're not saving money. And that, that's the big thing. And we had a lot of bidders that wouldn't do that. You know, they want, they want you to assume a 2 or 3% increase in your town's current cost.
you kind of walking me through some of this, just going through, just with the landfill one and the PPA costs and the town costs. And I know we have in the appendix in Schedule 4, it's the 11-7 and that 1% escalation on an annual basis, and it gives the schedule out for the next 20 years. But can you just kind of explain the difference between the PPA costs and town costs?
Yeah, PPA cost is obviously the contractual cost. Town cost is what we pay for power to, we get out the generation, we're paying for generation, which will be next year about 8.8 cents a kilowatt hour versus 6.6 cents this year. And as the transmission distribution cost of UI, that combination makes up the 16 to 18 cents a kilowatt hour. So again, the UIs are, costs are different depending on the demand. You know, there's like, some of the buildings have up to like 20 or 30% demand on KW. That raises the cost dramatically. You average it into a kilowatt hour cost, it raises it. Some have less. So that's what the town cost is based on, the actual, last year's actual figures plus next year's bid, and not knowing what UI is going to do. I mean, UI is going to go up, but we're no way of projecting that. We know what they're going up for generation, but we're not buying from them. But distribution and transmission will also go up, but we haven't, they haven't filed anything yet, even though it'll be effective January 1st.
Wow. So we're not even certain?
It could be higher. We could be saving, the fact that ours will be saving more money.
Right, exactly.
We're paying more over here and saving more in this one.
Right. So it could, right, it could potentially even be higher. You actually answered one of my other questions with that as well. One of the other questions I had, just in terms of looking at the, if I may continue...
Go ahead.
Tetra, thank you. We talked about the roof structural piece before, and the other thing which has come up in other projects post-wise were the zoning approvals. So I just want to say that, ask that here, do we need any zoning approvals for any of these projects?
It's no different, it's not a change in use, basically, at all. Zoning has said, we would go to them anyway and ask, but every project so far has not considered a change of use at all, so it doesn't require zoning change.
Yep. Just to clarify on that, we got the zoning approval last time. Because of the staff evaluation of the no change in use, that happens at the staff level, it doesn't have to go to the full commission. So that step wasn't skipped. That's the normal step. If the staff evaluates that, that determines that that use needs to go before the commission, then you go before the commission. They determine it doesn't, then you don't, and it can be a staff approval, an administrative approval, if you will.
And again, carrying on that, in addition to the approval from the roof manufacturers, the building department is making sure that these structures will comply with the 120 mile an hour wind that's the demand that's put on them. So they have to be reinforced so they won't blow over and wind the whole, just like any other project, they're complying with it, they're not skipping anything.
Just, go ahead.
I have a bunch more, and I can...
Can I stick on that one point? On the, on the zoning and the land use change or lack thereof? I think it makes perfect sense, you know, certainly on the buildings and the station and even the tennis recreation center where they're either parking lots or on top of buildings, right? But the one that jumps off is the landfill, because that's actually going on open space, right? So how would, would that one maybe possibly qualify as a land use situation or a change?
So far, in talking to the department, they haven't asked for that, but you could, I guess.
I mean, it just seems more, more different than the rest, if that makes sense.
Let's just go to the exact point, I think, which is, did this go to zoning and what was their ruling on what it needed?
Again, the staff has said it doesn't require, so we're not, they will sign off on it, but they're not requiring a hearing for a change of use. I mean, I don't know what their rationale is, you have to ask them that, but we just carry the permits and things around, they give us the, they walk the landfill with us or without, so...
If I may, I'm, I'm being reminded by, and actually had seen this in other, it's an accessory, that's, that's the ruling from zoning, zoning.
What does that mean?
It's an accessory use. It's not a change in use, it's something that just...
That's the, I forgot that word, right?
So did I. Had help from the audience.
Yeah. But again, just so everybody's clear, as Mr. Bowman said, he went to zoning, we follow whatever guidance they give us in terms of what the approval process is from there.
Now, they see the plans and specs, they may change their mind, who knows, you know? But at this point, they haven't.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, back to the, specifically since we're on the landfill one, one of the pieces in the contract is to know that there aren't any rocks or obstruction to prevent ordinary trenching, in terms of when you look at the plans for that, especially with the landfill. Are you confident that that...
Yep, they've already done borings along the way, so they know where the line's going. So that's why I let that stay in that contract, because they've already done it.
Gotcha. Okay. That's great, I love it, covering the bases. One of the other things that came up was meter testing, which I think was required yearly, and I'm not an expert, but you are, so I'm wondering, just in terms of...
I really don't know how often they have to be tested, that's beyond my, you know, they will be tested, I forgot what the language says there, but the decision was it didn't need to be tested yearly, it needed to be periodically tested, so...
Okay. All right, and you're confident and comfortable with that?
Yep.
As well?
I'm comfortable because that's what the experts told me. I know nothing about that.
What are they testing for?
Just to make sure if it's 50 KW, it's not 40 KW. It's got to, you know, it's got to produce what it says it's going to produce. That's basically what it is.
So in essence, that testing is to protect the town?
Yep.
Right. Which is partly why I'm wondering if yearly, which is what I saw in the language, is sufficient?
Oh, yearly, yeah, no one would test more than once a year.
Okay. All right.
It was getting to yearly, and that was, that wasn't in the...
Gotcha. Okay, gotcha, great. The other thing that I noticed about the, I think the term is insulation, to be sure that, it says, I think in section 7.2i, the host shall trim all foliage on the property.
Right.
Have you also had communication with Ken Pacco?
Yes.
About all the trees?
Well, basically, other than the recreation center, there is no foliage to trim. That was done with his rule. But on the top of the landfill, when you're up there, you're higher than anything around it. Number one, you may have to trim a tree in four or five years, but that's about it. Second thing, on top of the roofs of buildings, the schools, there's nothing anywhere near close to it. Same thing in the railroad station, it's facing, you know, west, there's nothing within that range that would require any changes. So we're comfortable leaving that language in there because there are no real, where that would happen.
But there is the one, I know we're on the landfill, is it okay if I touch base about the rec center? Because that, that was where I was thinking.
Yep, that one we heard.
Could that be an issue and...
Well, we got Ken's approval on that, so...
Okay. And then I think with that one, well, do you want me to just stick with the landfill? I can wait till the other ones are...
I've got one question on the landfill, but, so I was going to ask that before you were done.
Yep, I'll wait, go ahead, and I'll turn it back.
On the landfill, you said it's going to be four feet up? Are they going to be angled?
Yes.
All right. Any reflective issues? Where are they going to shine?
Reflective issues, they shouldn't be, the top doesn't shine, it's only the support columns that we found out at the rec center, and they can be made flat black, so there's no reflection. But there's really no reflection off the top, I mean, it just absorbs the sunlight, and we haven't heard any problems anywhere about that.
Okay. Thank you, that was it.
So just, this one is a more general question in terms of the rates, and I know we've talked about this before, but are you, do you work in consult with the finance department? Or how do you know in terms of negotiating the prices? We talked earlier, and again, we've talked about this before, about not negotiating with certain companies because they wouldn't guarantee certain rates.
Right. They don't want to, they don't want to supply a price based on our, you know, set of requirements, then you're not going to deal with them. Basically, that's simple as that. And then we got together, we had chosen four companies, first selectman, finance director, but worst director, myself, actually it was Rich White then, and out of the four, we picked these two to go forward with. The other four, two of them, one of them just refused to bid under these conditions. And that's Borrego, which is a big company, the biggest company. They just would not supply any kind of a bid against the fixed rate for 20 years. And the other companies decided they didn't want to bid this year and to come back again some other year or so. I had other companies submit me proposals, attempted, where they couldn't match these proposals. And again, keeping that price for 20 years is a tough one to have anybody stick with. So that's, that's how we had it now. And that's basically what we're doing, we're negotiating that and getting the best price compared to the price we're paying.
Is that right?
Now, they differed, you know, if they're up on, the ones in parking lots are going to cost more because they're up high, you got a structure. One on the landfill is going to run underground for like 3,500 feet, you're going to pay extra for that, too. Because on the roof, you notice the rooftop ones are eight cents, eight and a half cents because there's no extra cost, you know? So those are the kind of things you deal with.
That was, those were some of my questions, too, why the variety?
That's it.
And that makes a lot of sense now that you say that. So essentially, it's really, it's a bid, the bid process is what makes it, helps to make it competitive, and the reason that the prices are different is because of the infrastructure needed at the various sites.
If I might expand on that, I wouldn't sell Mr. Bowman's knowledge of how all this works, all the different components, everything else, which helps us optimize each of the different cost components to get the best deal for the town. We're not leaving any money on the table because he's kind of looked around and found every cubby hole that somebody might put in.
We appreciate that. Okay. What, may I have one more that's a general question, and then we have another one for one other project? There was language at some point about excess energy production. I mean, I'm assuming that we're, we're going to use everything that's produced and...
Yeah, I mean, I suppose, and we'll still be buying power for sides.
Right.
So this doesn't take away 100% of the power at all.
Right. So that's kind of a moot point in there.
Yeah.
Contractual language, yeah. I wondered, all right, that's it for me for this one.
For this one being the landfill or for this one being...
For this one being the landfill, yes, since we've moved in second to that one. And I, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Bowman, because you've sat, you've been sitting here for a long time, and to now be willing to patiently answer questions is wonderful.
Well, this is what I've been waiting for, not sitting.
Okay, the ability of having a virtual net is still not...
It's not something we're ready to pursue for a number of reasons. One is, it's not a rate approved by the PCA, it's a law. And the bankers of finance, these things, are very reluctant to say, this only is good for three years. The law doesn't say what's going to happen after four, three or four years. They could change the law. If they change the law, then the financial, you know, the way they construct their finances over 20 years can change radically, and the money just won't be there to make it work.
Yeah, the value proposition may go right away.
Yep. And even now, it's hard to make it work, because you're saying that they will waive 100% of the generation cost, but in the first year, I think it's 60% of the other cost, the second year, 50%, 30 or 40%, you could be just about breaking even at that point. And if they allow changes some more, who knows? So I don't know if anyone has gone for virtual net metering now that the rate is out and everyone understands how it works. So I think electric is going to have to toy with it some more and make it work, because I would love, I would love to put one of those up on somewhere. You know, we put it up on Smith Richardson in the back property there and provide enough power for this building, the libraries, the old building, the rest of the police station, by virtual net meter.
Could you describe just in very simple, short, what virtual net metering is?
Virtual net metering simply means that you can, you can pick up the five sites and say, I want the power that I'm building on that sixth site to be credited at the other five sites. That's the simplest way I can put it. You're not really supplying the power directly to those buildings, it's going to UI's transmission lines, but they have to credit that to your, the sites you pick. It's a great idea, but they get it down pat, but when the financial people aren't to... Sure, but I don't want, that's a risk the town would be taking, you know? I don't want, it's too big a risk.
Actually, that leaves me to another question. I know you're excited about that. But just to clarify, when we're doing these PPAs, these are specifically the power, it's, is it going back to the grid and...
No, it's going direct to the building.
No, so it's literally going, yeah, unlike the person...
We have our own meter there, separate, utility grade meter is there, yes, so we know exactly what's being produced and going in the building.
Right. Unlike in the homeowners' projects, it's going back to the grid.
Well, only the excess goes back to the grid. Whatever they produce to use in that building stays there, only if they produce more, it will go back to the grid. It reduces your actual uses directly.
Okay, right. Well, I appreciate, so that, in other words, we can see on each building, this is for this building and unlike, yes, the...
UI demands that.
Right.
Protecting them, too, and that's, it protects everybody, really.
Great, thank you. I'm really done.
With landfill, how about tennis and recreation?
Do we want to move and, do we move in second all these, or do you...
Oh, that's right, we only did it for one, right?
Yep.
Wow. All right, I'm going to suggest that we vote on these one at a time if you're ready, or we can table this, come back, and then vote on them all again in case any questions come up later during our discussion.
I think one at a time is fine.
Well, once we vote on it, then we're not coming back to it. If we table it, we can come back to, once we get done with all the discussion, come back and vote on them one after another.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to table? And the difference is, we're not postponing it, we're tabling it, that means we're going to address it within this meeting. We're not postponing it through a date certain, as we did earlier with an item. This is tabling it, so it stays within this meeting, we will vote on it in this meeting. Can we, and before we vote on it, shall we go to public comment?
Sure.
Any public comment on item number 10? Okay, seeing none, back to the board. I have a motion to table?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on table? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're up to item number 11 from the Director of Public Works. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolved at the agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Skyview Ventures for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system in the parking lot of the Recreation Tennis Center at 15 Old Dam Road for the sole benefit of the Recreation Tennis Center. The term of the agreement being 20 years be inherent by is approved, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
We will discuss it first.
Before you're voting on it?
Then, then we go to the public for comment.
Oh, okay.
All right. Then we come back to the board. Now, typically, it's public comment as opposed to questions, it's not a Q and A time, but you do get to ask your questions, and we may follow up directly with Mr. Bowman about those. We will most likely postpone that, or table it, as we did the first one, come back and vote at the end. So if we have any other questions that come up with the other topics, we can include the Recreation Tennis Center at 15 Old Dam Road, for the sole benefit of the Recreation Tennis Center, the term of the agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
We will discuss it first.
Before you're voting on it?
Then, then we go to the public for comment.
Oh, okay.
All right. Then we come back to the board. Now, typically, it's public comment as opposed to questions. It's not a Q and A time, but you do get to ask your questions, and we may follow up directly with Mr. Bowman about those. We will most likely postpone that or table it, as we did the first one, come back and vote at the end. So if we have any other questions that come up with the other topics, we can include those in before we vote on all of them.
Okay.
So the idea is discuss it, public comment, back to the board, table it, vote at the end. All right, that make sense? Okay. So right now, this is open to the board for discussion. Any comments or questions? Kevin?
None on this one.
Okay. Kristen?
Actually, one of my questions was answered earlier in a conversation with the town attorney, now that I look at my notes. And the other question Mr. Bowman asked or answered related to the changes in pricing. I think the other thing that I was, the other topic I was alluding to earlier was the tree trimming, but the other part of that that I didn't ask and was saving was with respect to speaking with the neighbors, because I know a lot of people immediately abutting, as we did in the other...
Well, again, based on our experience at the Recreation Center, the Recreation Park part is going to have a public hearing on this one before anything's done. So the neighbor will understand what's going on or be able to react to it, so.
Okay, so if we're...
Plant screening or whatever needs to be done, there will be a public hearing anyway.
Okay. Do you know when that public hearing approximately would be?
Well, Jerry's waiting to see if it's approved tonight, so he can schedule a public hearing. I have no idea.
How will we notify the neighbors about the public hearing?
I guess we can take the surrounding property notice and send them an email. I don't know. I mean, Jerry will be doing that. He knows the neighbors. And I would ask him to do that, to tell us who to notify.
Okay.
And here it would be right there. I mean, you could have it at the new building.
Still on the Recreation Tennis Center project, Kristen, any further questions?
Yes, thank you. So one of the things that Mr. Tetra alluded to was drawings for the landfill. And I did actually see some renderings in the electronic backup, although I couldn't find it in the printed. But in the electronic version, it actually had some photos of some other potential projects, as well as a diagram that kind of showed where things were.
It really looked just like the one at the Rec Center, it's the same contractor, so.
Right. So specifically with that, and I guess this relates to the other one as well, the, the specific plans and drawings are done post-approval?
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, you know, both, with both the previous item and this one, we're not looking at the specific plans. We're approving going forward with the agreement.
Yeah, if you look at the contract, if I call them condition precedent, there's a whole bunch of things that have to happen before, you know, even though you sign the contract, the laws don't go ahead, you're financing, do things. But then there is conditions precedent, like he has to have his permits in place, he has to prove he has his financing in place, you have to prove, you know, a whole bunch of things in there before, you know, anything would actually start construction. So there's a whole bunch of conditions precedents for them in there.
Right. So I guess one of my questions with this one is, if there's a public hearing, then it would be you working with Mr. Lombardo to help address the needs of the public and work with them. Okay.
See, this is a building, we try to put it on the roof. The roof will not hold this building. The structures and the support structure would not be able to hold these, so we couldn't put it on the roof. The only way we could put it is in the parking lot. And again, in terms of going back to the question of Sal, I mean, this contractor's already been up on the roof. The stock to Sal knows the roof design that's going in, is comfortable that it's going to work for them. So I mean, they've done their homework already. It's just a matter now of having the person that installs the roof agree with what everyone else agrees to. So a lot of work has already been done on that.
Just, just on that quickly, you're talking about the Tennis Recreation Center.
Yes.
A brand-new building.
Yes.
And the roof is not supportive enough to put...
No, it's not built to have, you know, that kind of weight on the roof. But I don't, you know, the structure inside is not, it's on Mars. Just like we're going to put on the Jennings Beach Pavilion, same thing.
Well, that I get. It's a, it's an old wood structure. This is a new...
It's not the wood, it's just the inside support beam structure. It isn't there to support extra weight. But the theater was, we could put it on the theater, even though it was old because it had the structure and integrity inside. This one is not meant, it's just a, it's a shop, you know? It's all it is.
Interesting. Okay.
No more for me.
So this is on the Tennis Recreation Center? The board is done with questions for now?
Yes.
Any public comment on the Tennis Recreation Center? If you come up one at a time to the podium, please give us your name and address. All right?
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Believe me, we've aged quite a bit in this room.
Yeah, you've carved an awful lot, haven't you? My name is Stuart Nazaro, my wife Joy, on South Pine Creek Road. And we're talking about number 11 here, as such. The thing that we want to talk about, or at least discuss, is some of the questions concerning us. First, a generic question. Is there a master plan for the town as to where these panels are going up? Are there programs that are, you know, lined up for this area, for that area? For whatever reason, is there a master plan?
Yeah, we talk about it being public comment as opposed to a Q and A. So why don't you go through your comments, and then we will bring those up in the discussion after.
Well, the next question is basically, why did you select this area for the panels?
Mm-hmm.
And piggybacking on that, this really, were there any considerations of the neighbors' viewpoints on this? For example, I think they're doing a fantastic job of putting up the facilities and the trees and everything else. And I went over to the building, and I said, you're just doing a great job and everything else. Is there anything else new coming up in the way that's facilities or anything? No, 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 everything's fine, we're all finished. Okay, thank you, you know, and all the sudden, the things that keeps crawling out of woodwork are, wait a minute, what are the values and risks to us that live right there around the panels, around that area, that could affect us, that we can nip it in the bud rather than waiting for a monstrosity? We can remember about five years ago, some organization in town came up and said we want five swimming pools in that area. And we said, wait a minute, they had that thing so lined up of all the people and all the ones that making donations, and who would be getting rights to that swimming pool? And before, it became a very big monster. And if we didn't have more discussions about it to get all the questions out, it would have been a real faux pas to try to put five swimming pools in there that wouldn't take care of the community, but only saw a certain part of the community, and consequently, thank goodness, we reviewed it and had everybody involved, rather than this small group that says, hey, this is the place for it because it's, it's part of the town, there's facilities there. The big thing is, why don't we talk about these things beforehand, rather than getting into them and going through it piece by piece and piece? Some things came up, which were very interesting, which is right in line with us, is really the, if me, as a neighbor there, saying, hey, what are the values to me, and what are the risks of these things here? The risk could be everything from the, where the panels are going to be put, and how they're going to be put, and is there anything health problems? Is there anything about noise? Is there anything? I'll go down a whole list of things. This is, I'm concerned, because all of a sudden, what we have is a beautiful area, all lined up, and now we got a carport. We got a carport that comes into our area, that goes all over this thing, that's so beautiful and all that. But the key thing is, what does it mean to us from a health viewpoint and just our comments, so we are, you know, not just trying to look for problems, but the fact of preventing problems in terms of all of these things that are popping up? Why is it different from top of the building? Why is it different from there? Why does it go there? Why wasn't it someplace else to avoid these problems? Isn't there a chance for a public to just discuss it with you? I'm not telling you we want to fight it or anything. I think the key thing is really involvement. I hear about all the protagonists that are involved in this, the one protagonist who's missing was the neighbors, the ones that are going to be faced with this day in and day out. And what does it mean to us? Is it a health problem? Is this, is this, whatever? And if they clear those things up, maybe we're going to be a lot more supportive and comfortable to it, rather than keep throwing up questions and making the mountain out of the mow bill. So I'm not going to get into all the different things, but again, the thing is, I'm asking you from one point of view, the neighbor's viewpoint, the value and the risk. And can we discuss those things and get it out of our system and, and move on or whatever? Because it presents a big thing with all of this life. We're going to look at this picture and say, hey, this is it. And after I got finished saying, is there any more building or anything else? Not a thing. Don't worry about it. I'm complimenting on one hand, and all of a sudden, I'm saying, look at this thing. We live right here. It's not just facing it, it's, what's the meaning of facing it right there? Our whole neighborhood here. So we got the South Pine Creek Association saying, wait a minute, you know, what's going on here? We see things going on, there's a lot of value added to the community and all that. But wait a minute, we're talking about our community now. It's going to support the whole community. What is it going to do to us as we live with that? So those are some, without getting into the whole notes that I was writing here and doing, you covered a lot of things, except for one thing, us. How do you get us involved to understand or to ask the questions beforehand and not to make a big, a donny book out of it? Do I have enough to you, or you want me to go on?
No, from my standpoint, I think you've made some good points, and that's enough for me. What, you know, based on what you're saying, it would be my intention to support holding off on this until there's been a neighborhood meeting and brought the neighbors into this. I think that, as, as was described earlier, it's a little bit uncomfortable that we vote to approve it before the neighborhood meeting. It seems to make sense to have the neighborhood meeting first, as certainly to address some of the questions you have, which I think can be answered. So I think that, so that, as you pointed out, and I thought both, you chose your words very carefully and very well, and I think that was a very reasonable position, that you'd like to know what it is before you know whether to support it or not support it. And I think that's a very clear reason.
And it sounds like it's, well, fait accompli, no matter what. It's just fait accompli.
Well, if we vote on it, it might be. If we don't vote on it, it won't be. So I think that...
We just want to be a part of it, you know? It's our home, it's our area, it's our concern. And then what are we getting out of it? Is it something that we're getting more risk than, than value out of it?
As, as somebody who moved to Fairfield 60 years ago, I appreciate your perspective.
No, no, it's...
And I agree with the first selectman on this. I think, based on your comments and what we've learned and what we've heard, I think it does make sense to be a bit more prudent here, take a step back, gather the information before moving forward.
I think it'd be evaluated for everybody in the, in the long run, and very helpful.
Sir, thank you. Did you want to add something? If you'll come up to the podium and give us your name and address, yes?
Joy Nazaro, 1190 South Pine Creek Road. Just to add a couple things, Mr. Kyler, you brought up earlier about the fact that having it in the parking lot versus on a roof. And Mr. Bowman, I believe it is, talked about the roof at the Rec Center. I'm surprised we have a brand spanking new building and no thought, it seems, that was given for the solar panels on the, on the new building. So, but getting back to your point, Mr. Kyler, about the, having it out in the open, this will be out in the open if it's in the parking lot. And it's, and from what we gathered from the web, it's a very large area that we had a plan of over 160 feet, wide by 100, by 62 feet. So it's a pretty expansive area. So again, you know, we'd like to find out more information about, you know, the risks, the aesthetics, and, you know, what does it really mean? Is this the only way, the only option? So I would like to point that out.
Again, don't leave us out. You're, we're part of it, but not, it doesn't seem anywhere along the line that we're not part of it.
Yep.
The community, right here.
Again, thank you very much for your, sharing your concerns, and I think you'll find support from this board for...
You know, the one line in here, I don't like out here, blah, blah, blah. This is for Old Dam Road for the sole benefit of the Recreation Tennis. That's public. You know, this is sole, I'm going to say for the sole benefit of the Recreation slash Tennis Center. It's more than that. It's not just, it's just for the sole benefit of the center.
I think that point is referring to who would use the power coming from the panels, sir.
I know.
Technically, it's, by lowering taxes, it's the benefit of everybody.
I know, but I'm, I'm saying, the implications without saying, hey, who read, did anybody read into that, or...
Sir, I think you made your point.
Peace.
There was a...
It's been a good meeting, I'll tell you. The whole night has been a good meeting, just listening to the Q and A and the inner relationships between all. This was a fantastic eye-opener for me, too. So I think we're both making something out of this whole thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We try, we try our best. Kristen, go right ahead.
I, I will...
But no, you took my papers, too.
Oh.
We have a copy of that, so I'm...
Took his presentation.
He's trying to walk up to a copy.
That certainly shuts down the presentation. That pen was on the chair, sir.
I think someone left it there.
Thank you.
Lost and found, thank you.
I just wanted to thank Mr. and Mrs. Nazaro for waiting through what I think may be one of our longer Board of Selecting meetings ever. I don't know if we're quite at a record yet, but...
We want to make sure we spend every minute we can with you, Kristen.
Oh, that's so nice. So I, I too, I...
I'll second that.
I guess, this will come up again in another item, but I, we did, we talked about the public hearing, and that's, those were where some of my questions were. So with that, I would like to move that we postpone this item.
I'm going to suggest...
Actually, I'm going to just withdraw that.
That you don't do that, and I suggest that you move that we take no action on it.
We don't, I don't need to move anything then, right? If there's no action, we don't need to make a motion?
Yeah, or you can move we take no action. Either one works, but if you, so we can, do you have a preference whether we move to do that?
Mercy for Jennifer.
It's the same effect.
Yes, I'm just going to say nothing.
All right, then let's, let's...
As such, I want to ask a favor of you, just that, could you let us know what happens as a result of this? Are you going to have a meeting, are you...
Let me, let me give you what my intent is, and I think, based on listening to my colleagues, we're in agreement on that, which is, we propose to take no action on this. So that means we won't approve it. We're not voting it down, but we're not approving it. That means literally nothing will happen coming out of here. My thoughts and request of Mr. Bowman and Mr. Lombardo would be that they hold a public meeting, get a description out, get some graphics or some visuals of what this might look at, so the neighborhood can see it, neighbor can see it, ask their questions based on that, so we, you have a better understanding of what's taking place, what this will be. And after that, and after they've addressed the public concerns as best they can, and come back and say, here's what we've been able to address, here are the things the neighbors are concerned about we haven't been. So this board can then vote on it with full knowledge and understanding of what the neighborhood is supportive of, what the neighborhood has concerns about, and what actions we've taken in our best case to do that. So if that sounds okay with the board?
It does.
Mr. Bowman, that...
Sure. You know, I just point, you pointed out there's a South Pine Creek Road Association. If we could get the name of those people, then it'd be easier to contact the people who...
Is there a president or key contact for the South Pine Creek Road Association? You don't have to tell us now, but if you can get that information...
Yeah, if you get that to us, then we know we're, get it to the right people.
We have some RTM members who would be helpful on that regard as well.
I don't have a card with me, actually.
I do. You'll get that information to me, we'll get it to Mr. Bowman.
Can you point us the name of the...
Just give the contact information to the neighbors. You've got a phone number and an email address there. You get that information, we'll put that out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tetra, may I add? While, while we're on the topic of contacting people, RTM member Eric Sundin is also another great contact.
We'll, we'll include the RTM members in any communication going forward.
All, all of Mr. Sundin.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. We took no action on item 11. We're up to item number 12. And that is, yes?
Nope.
To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolved that the agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Green Skies, for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system over the westbound parking lot of the Fairfield Center Railroad Station, for the sole benefit of Tomlinson Middle School located at 200 Unquote Road, the term of this agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All right, this item is now before us. Mr. Bowman?
All right, a little description here, too. The amount of power being produced is probably more than Tomlinson will use, but that power is going to be used to run the LED lighting that's going to be under this system. So underneath the whole structure will have LED lighting. It'll also be used, because they're, part of the agreement, they're putting in another electric car charging station. That will be used to supply that station also. So it will provide the lighting for the LED system and for the electric car charging station and for Tomlinson.
So it's not for the sole purpose of this, Tomlinson?
It really is. I mean, once, that's an onsite use. No one else is going to benefit from it. Like, you can't... Like, you can't supply it to the railroad station. You can only go to one meter.
Yep.
So this is prior to the meter, so.
So just, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, that's it. Basically that, it's also, you know, set up so it's all on town property, none of it's on the state property there. They don't want to get involved with DOT, it would take us 10 years. Secondly, some concerns were, you had raised earlier, is that sometimes buses are going through there because of railroad station problems. It's set up so the buses can continue through there.
Yep. Specifically during the train crash, we routed buses through that, even though it's not normally a bus path. We couldn't route it on the southern side of the tracks because you're familiar with how crowded those roads are in there.
Right.
So the only place we could route the buses through was this one. It's certainly not a normal use, but in times of crisis, that certainly was used by Metro North to provide transportation services.
It also would be good for, if there's a fire truck or ambulance needs to get in there, it would provide the same access, which is, so it has a very good use. In addition, they're high enough so we can plow under it, which is a big concern. And they're going to be tilted like this. So when snowfall, it'll fall in the middle, the two cars will be here, it'll fall in the middle and it won't fall on the cars or behind the cars. So it'll fall in the part of the coverage which has no cars.
But then the panels be pointed in opposite directions.
No, because as long as they're pointed, they'll be pointed south and west, but this tilt doesn't make that much difference. See, if it was the other way around, it would, if they were pointed away from the south and west. But it's a 90 degree angle to it. This is their, this is the way they make the presentation. This was their idea, not ours. It makes it simpler for people, you know, using the thing to keep the snow off the car.
Who is they?
Greens, Greenskies again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tetra. I would just affirm that that's important because in the middle of the day when the sun is melting and the snow comes sliding off those panels, I've experienced that. So it's important that those be tilted the way that they are proposing. I would just, given the nature of the conversation we just had, and the fact that there are neighbors in a different way who bought this property, as well as the fact that I know the Parking Authority hasn't given their final approval, is that?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. So I'm wondering if this one should also be one that we, wait, even though we've been talking about this one, you've actually shared pieces of that information with us before.
Well, we had to get rid of that vendor and get a new vendor.
Yeah, so that, that was going to be my question coming up. Okay, I'm certain. The, can you, we had a vendor who was ready to do this, we're negotiating. That vendor, I misunderstood, he went, I'm going to say he, that vendor went away. They, we had major issues with the Parking Authority in terms of the communication and getting their approval. Has the Parking Authority been presented with this, signed off on it? Have they seen?
Tomorrow night. They've seen, they've seen the proposal. Let me back into it. The vendor that was going to propose that did not come from the group that we had set up. He came from the Energy Task Force, would negotiate and brought it to our attention. It was not a vendor that we had chosen. A year and a half into their negotiations, the representative of that vendor kept changing. It was going to be six cents, eight cents, 10 cents, 11 cents, I'll pay. They wanted to be paid to offset their cost of power, $20,000 a year. As I pointed out, they wanted no cost of power, everyone else is getting reduced power, but they wanted to make sure they weren't going to be charged for the LED lighting, to make sure that the electric charging station, you know, wouldn't be charged. And then now, the vendor kept saying, oh yeah, no problem. Then all of a sudden, he's, no, we can't do that. Went on and on. So finally, I called the owner, and I realized all the emails we had from this guy, he never mentioned the business people. And I had a meeting with him and he said, I never heard any of this. I would never have gone, this is crazy. So he fired the guy and he said, I will offer this product, anyone else will take it over thinks they can do it. Because he already had the recs from the state bid. So we got both Greenskies and Skyview, the 200 we're using, they both made proposals. Greenskies was the best. They agreed to pay $10,000 a year to the Parking Authority, which is what they really wanted to pay for the cost at the Fairfield Railroad Station. Agreed that, you know, there would be no cost to them for anything once that thing is installed, plus they get the $10,000 a year. That's what the Parking Authority wanted, and that's what they're getting. So tomorrow night, we'll know for sure whether they have that or not. So, there was a reason we vetted these vendors in the first place, this shows one of the reasons. We're talking about rooftop, this is an aside, but they're also putting one up at the Public Works Garage. They already put that on a landfill and run it there, and they said, well, maybe it's better if we put it on the garage, it'd be cheaper. Well, again, the garage roof doesn't support it. They're going to go in and fix the roof, so it will hold it at their cost. Because to them, it's cheaper to do that than it is to run the line 2,000 feet. But they're willing to pay the cost to make the roof hold the systems. I mean, they pay for, every other vendor would have asked us on the landfill, oh, you got endangered species? That's not in the project. We'd have to pay for that, which I assume we would. They went out and did it. You know, I spent three or four months on a good mind. This is a big vendor and really no, can't be better.
Mr. Bowman, given the challenges we had with the prior vendor and the Fairfield Parking Authority, and having talked to the Fairfield Parking Authority, and know that they are very much a stakeholder and want to be very much involved with this, I would feel much more comfortable voting on this after we heard back from the Parking Authority and the concerns. And frankly, if I'm on the Parking Authority, I would not want to hear that the Board of Selectmen already approved this before we took the.
Yeah, it was a scheduling error. I should have scheduled this two weeks and I wouldn't have waited three hours either, it would have been better.
The, you just got lucky today.
Just your day.
So not to waste your time any further on this one.
Yep.
I would propose we, and I'm open, either take no action or postpone it, either way we put it off to, it might simply just take no action on this and come back to it when Mr. Bowman.
Parking Authority approves tomorrow night.
In case there's any questions or any follow-up coming out of the Parking Authority, you have time to do that. All right. If that's okay with my colleagues, we'll just move on to item 13.
You're making progress.
Yeah. Mr. Bowman, item 13 is.
Andrew Ward.
Near and dear to my heart, Andrew Ward. I believe it's known now as Fairfield Ward High School, but I do really appreciate the memories that this brings back.
Yeah. To me, we're still Roger Ludo and Andrew Ward.
I'm with you all the way on that one.
Okay, so it's Sal and I worked these one, these two through on the two high schools. And basically, they're pure rooftop units, you know all about Ludo, the roofs are, I don't know all about the Andrew Ward roof structure. But I know, again, Sal only picked the sites where he knew the roof warranties were long enough to warrant it, where we wouldn't have the 10-year roof, only the, you know, the longer roof. And again, this is an eight and a half cent project, so this is real benefit to the town.
Now, that's because it's half the 17 cents.
That's right.
I was trying to figure out how the cost and the savings were the same. I'm like, where's the zero on here? But it's half a 17, is what the number is.
That's right. I didn't realize.
Thank you. Thank you, sorry about that. Yes. Again, I'm going to compliment you and the school district on working together on this to save money. We potentially are saving money for the school district, but it comes out of the same taxpayer pocket. So I want to thank both teams for working together to.
Not just this, but Tomlinson, too, we worked there, you know, for a while.
Any questions on?
First, may I make a motion, since I don't think we had a motion for this one?
We did.
And Jen's not here for number 13.
It was moved.
Did I? No, I don't think so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong one.
Jen would be keeping us on.
Yeah, let me do this. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolved that the agreement between the town of Fairfield and Greenskies for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of Fairfield Ward High School at 755 Melville Avenue for the sole benefit of Fairfield Ward High School, that for the term of the agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Mr. Bowman? Or Kristen, do you have questions at this point?
I do.
Go right ahead.
Well, actually, I want to say thank you. This one is, the school piece, and I should have said that with the Tomlinson project. I, I'm thrilled and I hope that this is a long and fruitful relationship that will continue.
We're trying.
Yeah. And we really appreciate that, because I know it's been a long process, so thank you. The question I have is, is the roof at Ward, we're done, we're through all the phases with, are we, are we still have another summer left? Just trying to remember.
One more summer.
Yep.
Okay.
Three phases, three phases are done, so that first day, school's out. Greenskies, I mean that you act tonight. Greenskies can be right there working on the completed roofs done one and two years ago, while Silktown Roofing is working on the last phase. So hopefully following right up on them sometime in September, finishing the installation of the PV project.
Gotcha. So is it possible then that the rest of the roof could get panels at some point in the future, once that?
The layout, when I was talking to Greensky, the layout was chosen, Ward is a busy roof, there's a lot of rooftop equipment, so there's a lot of shadows cast, there's a lot of elevation changes that cast shadows and things like that. So they had to work with the solar orientation and equipment in the way and stuff like that. So it's across the whole building, it's just scattered around where, the nice warm spot where a dog would lie. It's been.
We can't turn the HVAC like trees. No, you can't do that.
I don't think the kids at Ward would be happy about that. And actually, that raises another question about HVAC. Seeing as I, I know.
HVAC or PV?
HVAC, and it's related to the rooftop. I've had some students who I know who have talked about HVAC in Ward and the fact that there, there are parts that are air conditioned and parts that aren't. If ever that was to be addressed, would that be an issue with the roof and panels? And I recognize that's, and I'm bringing up something that's not necessarily in the long-term plan at all, but.
It's early in the evening, so.
But this is.
Yeah, if you ask me later, I might be too tired to answer.
I mean, honestly, I know it may seem like a crazy question, but we're putting these panels on for 20 years.
Correct.
So there, and yeah, part of that building.
So the question is, installation of the panels would that limit the ability to air condition other parts of the building?
It would, it would be an existing condition to consider when designing. It's not so fully packed on the roof that there wouldn't be opportunities to do air conditioning. The move, and in actuality, the move for more efficient HVAC systems, especially for HVAC, for air conditioning, is to go to what they call variable refrigeration equipment. Basically, it splits the, you don't have these massive air handlers. They did that at Stratfield, they did it at Woods, they're doing it at, where else are they doing it? Doing it at Riverfield.
Further questions?
All right, thank you. Nope, that's it for me for now.
Good for this one?
Good.
Good, you're good? All right. Next up, oh, hold it. Do we want to vote on this now or table it? Come back, vote. All right. If we're done discussing, any comments from the public?
If it were to be public, I support it.
Back to the board. Are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
I am.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, got that one done. One for five, Mr. Bowman.
Well, if I get two for five, I win the batting title, huh?
Hall of Fame material.
All right. Item 14, Director of Public Works, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolved that the agreement between the town of Fairfield and Greenskies for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of Fairfield-Ludl High School at 785 Uncle Road, for the sole benefit of Fairfield-Ludl High School, the term of the agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.